For allowing us to meet here today and ask for your guidance as we do the business of the city, we ask your prayers for all the servicemen who serve us all over the world. Thank you.
Thank you, you can be seated. All right. Okay, so if the council could join me down in the front, we have a couple of presentations this evening. Kathy, we're going to bring up Cassandra Palmer. She's from our police department. Kathy, why don't you stand right here? And we're going to give her a certificate of recognition. Cassandra Palmer is instrumental in the city's emergency preparedness. In the absence of an official emergency operations coordinator, she has taken on the duties and revised the city's emergency operation plan. Before I go on, I want to show you this document. So, look at that. That's something that she's gone through incrementally, updated, improved, but that's the kind of time and effort that your staff has taken to make sure that in the instance of an emergency, we have procedures in place to protect our community. So, we're forever grateful for that. Kathy also coordinates the city's participation on October 16th where the city and staff joined several millions of Californians in the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill. Her vital efforts are very much appreciated by the council and staff. So, we're going to give her an opportunity to speak on the emergency preparedness. Thanks Kathy.
As she just mentioned, on October 16th, we participated in the Great Shakeout Drill, and these are just a few slides showing some pictures of city activities. This is your city staff trying to practice and be prepared so that when that eventual big earthquake happens, everybody will know what to do, where to go, and how to function to best serve our citizens. At 10:16, the earthquake hit, and we broadcast the earthquake over the city's PA system so that everybody could hear the rumble, get under our desks, and wait it out, you know, duck cover and hold on. As soon as the earthquake stopped, the rumble stopped, an announcement was made that we needed to evacuate the entire civic center complex, and a designated area was selected, and everybody was told to clear the buildings. So, we have actually a process that we go through every year, we practice this, where we go through the buildings and make sure that everybody got out. We meet out in the parking lot and make sure that everybody's accounted for, and then decide what we're going to do from there. This year, the city manager said, "All right, we've had a big earthquake, we are going to activate our emergency operations center." This is the emergency operations center. You're actually sitting in our emergency operations center. Most cities have more space, and they have areas that are designated for that, that are set up all the time. Well, our emergency operations center is right here in this multipurpose room, or city council chambers, and we have all the supplies in boxes in a closet back here. So, we pull out tables, we set up chairs, computers, phones, and away we go. We actually activated to a Level 3, which is the highest level. Now, the county did not actually activate or run a drill for the shakeout this year, but they did know that we were drilling, and so that we were able to call there if we needed to, and still send our notifications that we were activated and going through this process. We used a SIM cell, which is actually four different city employees that were calling in messages to the EOC, using our radios to radio in, basically for operations purposes. And we actually had runners coming in with messages, which were giving us updates to the activity and what was happening out in the city in our simulated earthquake. One of the goals of this was to put together an incident action plan, and our city manager and our operations section chief, as well as our planning and intelligence section chief, and our, wherever he is, Corey's over there, he's hiding in the corner, he's our logistics chief, got together and they put a plan together on basically what our priorities are going to be with an earthquake, with the information that was coming in, in terms of the status out in the community. We even played a little TV news broadcast that had a newscast of the damage that was all over Southern California with this earthquake. The earthquake we used was a 7.8. So, the injects that we used for this incident were all things that the scientists have predicted would happen if an earthquake that large happened out on the San Andreas Fault. The busiest section is probably the operations section, because they're trying to get a hold of, you know, the injuries that are out there, find out what resources they need. And the first thing they do after the earthquake happens, and this is a function, a priority function for the operations section, is, you know, your police officers are immediately out in the field doing what we call windshield surveys, as is your fire department, and public works, as they're available. And that means they're driving around and trying to find out how bad the damage is in different areas, so that we know where to start. Because when you have something that big, it's not always obvious of, you know, which scenario or which incident is the worst. So, operations, as you can see, they're writing stuff on the boards, trying to figure out what's going on. And even though this is just a drill, everybody takes it very seriously, they get nervous as if it's something real that's happening. This is our planning section, and our section chief there, you can see that we had some community partners that were here. In addition to the fire authority, we had Southern California Edison here participating with us, we had a representative from LA MC here, we were interacting with the school, because they, the school district had their own drill going on, but we were on the phone with them, talking about situations, you know, lockdown versus evacuation, and what they were doing with their students. So, we had all that information coming in, and the ladies over here, right here, are actually putting that information into a computer that posts it, so the county can see our status and what's going on. It's called Web EOC, and it's a function that this county has, where we can communicate with all the other cities and the county, and let them know what our status is here. It used to be that we'd have to fill out a form and fax it over. Well, now, we can actually just log it into a computer database, and then you can see what's happening at the other cities as well. Logistics are our getters. I'm not sure how much everybody knows about emergency preparedness, but we have different groups. Operations are your doers, they're out in the field, you know, rescuing people. Our planners are what we call our thinkers, they're planning ahead to see what we're going to need, and, you know, putting together those action plans. Well, logistics are our getters, and one of the things that logistics had to do for us, since we worked right through lunch, was order lunch into the EOC. They were also busy coordinating resources. Because this earthquake happened on the San Andreas Fault, we estimated damage maybe wouldn't be quite as bad down in South County, and so, we had resources, simulated resources coming in from South County. So, we were trying to decide where we were going to stage these resources, and how we would use them to best serve our community. And actually, during the incident, we had a couple of funny things that happened. One, our EOC phones, which worked perfectly fine when we plugged them in and set it up, the minute the drill started, they stopped working. The other thing that happened is, we had a specialized radio channel, we tested it, we were all ready to go. When the drill started, it stopped working. We got all those problems fixed, and they all started working again, but then during the drill, we actually had a city employee that was injured. And so, it went from being, you know, a drill situation, where some of the employees had to leave the EOC and address an employee, a minor injury, but an injury nonetheless, had to address a real-life situation. So, that happens sometimes when you're drilling. The management section, as you see there, we've got our city manager, and our administrative services director, and our city clerk, you know, one of the things you can see right down in this lower corner, our city clerk is holding up our resolution that is declaring the disaster. And in this particular one, we would have to go back to council, because the city council wasn't here, seven, within seven days, they would have to actually adopt a resolution that says, "Yeah, what the city manager did was good for us." So, that enables the city to keep on with business, even if we weren't able to get city council in that quickly. All of this happened in a matter of a couple hours. Finance was very busy. They took a lot of calls, and they had some situations they had to deal with out in the field, like how are we going to pay for supplies and things that we needed? So, sometimes you catch people at a period where they don't look as busy as they are, but there's a lot of activity going on in this room. When we finished, we do what's called a hot wash or a debrief, and we put together an after-action plan, which is all the things that we did really well, and maybe some of the things we want to do better next time. And we put together a little bit of information that goes into this plan, so that we can practice some of these things, maybe adjust our emergency operations plan, if it's procedural, and just be a little bit more prepared next time. But I want to tell you that all of our city staff really took this seriously, and I was just really pleased. Everyone from the public works guys that helped us set up the EOC, to everybody who came in, and our role players who called stuff in.
And just a little tidbit of information before we move on. This council and prior councils have taken steps to reserve a large percentage of our reserve, which is kind of like your savings in case of emergencies. So, I think it's 25% now, isn't it? What's the total amount on that? Isn't it like 2.3?
It's 3.1, Glenn. 3.1.
So, we've got $3.1 million set aside that can't be touched without a special action of the council that's there in case something catastrophic does happen to the community, and I think that shows very good planning. All right, so we're moving on. Can I have Greg Gillespie, please, come up? Hi, Greg. Why don't you give him a hand? Greg is part of the Red Shirt Friday, and Red Shirt Fridays is a program designed to honor our deployed, and has been in effect since 1945. RED stands for Remember Everyone Deployed, and wearing red, I'm sorry, aspires to recognize active-duty personnel and veterans, build civic pride, promote understanding of our military personnel, and help in the healing process of our nation's heroes. The council encourages everyone in the community to wear red on Fridays to show support for the heroic troops.
Thank you very much. I accept this on behalf of all of the active-duty, and those currently coming home. You can't believe what meaning that red shirt has to those men and women when they come home for the first time, and they see that they have a community that cares. You'll see tears, believe me. It's something that I'm so proud to be behind, because the meaning just doesn't end. The good that it does doesn't end. And what a great city to have it in is Los Alamos with. You have deployments leaving here all the time. You have groups coming home, very happy days coming home. And then, we have the flip side, we have the, what's called the Angel Flight Mission. You'll see the hundreds of motorcycles going down Cotella Avenue escorting a hearse with a fallen soldier, a fallen American hero. I would ask that, not just on Fridays, but whenever one of those escorts come through, if they saw a C or red, you can't believe the difference it would make to our military men and women. It goes right through the heart, guys. It really does. I want to thank Los Alamos for this, it's great. Thank you very much.
So, go out and get a red shirt and wear it on Friday. I know the city is taking some action to make sure that staff and the council will have that appropriate attire to support our heroes, both alive and fallen. So, next, we'd like to call up Mark Corondo. Did I say that wrong? For Habitat for Humanity. All right, well, what we'll do is, if Mark finds his way, and we'll go ahead and address that later. Thanks very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item six, oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker. I will say that if you're looking to speak on an agenda item, you can wait for that agenda item to come up. I will let you know that the comments are limited to three minutes, and so, if you have something a little bit more wordy to say, you might want to step up now. I have a couple of cards. I'd like to invite Jared Dever to come up. Jared is our representative over at Vector, and he's got some updated information regarding the, not only West Nile virus, but some new mosquitoes that we have that are posing a real problem for all of our communities here in Orange County. Welcome, Jared.
Welcome, thank you. I really appreciate the invitation and the chance to update your citizens, as Mayor Grant Mahia alluded to, two very real and dangerous threats to your citizens. The first of which are invasive species of mosquitoes that are found just on the other side of our Orange County border in Los Angeles County. Now, in 2011, a very dangerous mosquito called the Asian Tiger Mosquito, Aedes albipictus, was found in the cities of El Monte South, El Monte Duarte, and Arcadia. Since that time, since 2011, we have seen it spread to about four other cities. Fortunately, most of those cities are to the east of the original infestation area, but the next two mosquitoes that I'll be speaking about are moving further south and towards the Orange County border. This year, the, again, the Greater Los Angeles Vector Control District and the San Gabriel Vector Control District have identified two new invasive species of Asian mosquitoes. The first of which is referred to as the Yellow Fever Mosquito, and as its name implies, it is a very competent vector, it is very capable of transmitting diseases like Yellow Fever, Dengue Fever, Chickengunya, West Nile Virus, and also dog heartworms to your pets. The next mosquito that was discovered just this last summer, and shortly as a couple weeks ago, is actually an Australian species of mosquito, which caught us quite off-guard. We do not see a lot of movement of Australian and/or European mosquitoes to the United States. So, this was quite a rare find. Unfortunately, it has been discovered in several other cities in Los Angeles County since its discovery about six weeks ago. And of note, it has been discovered in the city of Commerce. And so, why should we care? Why you as Los Alamos, why should you care about these invasive mosquitoes? Well, all three of the mosquitoes that I've spoken about are capable of transmitting human pathogens, human diseases such as West Nile Virus, and the others that I've spoken about this evening. But more importantly, they are incredibly disruptive to your Commerce, they're incredibly disruptive to your personal quality of life. These are day-biting mosquitoes, very, very different than our native mosquitoes in Orange County, which tend to feed during dawn and dusk hours. So, times when we're not really out and about very much, so we don't get a great deal of exposure to the mosquitoes that are in Orange County. These mosquitoes bite readily during the day, at all times of the day, indoors, outdoors. Areas that are infested with these mosquitoes have a term for that infestation, and they simply call it surrendering your backyard. Your property is no longer usable because of this, how pestiferous these mosquitoes are. And anybody who's been to an area in the world that has Asian Tiger Mosquitoes, or more importantly, Yellow Fever mosquitoes, knows how serious these consequences can be. And you should, we're trying to prevent their introduction into Orange County, and this is where Los Alamos residents can really step up and help. All three of these introductions have been noticed and reported to those districts by residents. Residents who recognize that there was something different going on in their community, something different about the mosquito behavior, they called the districts and were able to go out and identify these mosquitoes, and then quickly put into eradication measures to try to suppress them and limit their spread. They are incredibly hard to control. These mosquitoes have a key to their success, and why they are so widely spread throughout the world. Their egg-laying behavior is very, very different than our native mosquitoes. They lay individual tiny, tiny, two-and-a-half-millimeter eggs on the surface of containers. These are able to desiccate for up to one year, no contact with water, come in contact with water within that year, rehydrate, the larvae will drop from the egg, and start the cycle all over again. So, you can see how incredibly easy it is to move something like a potted plant or plant materials with these eggs on them, transport them into Orange County, and before we know it, their problem is now our problem. So, we're asking for the public's help in recognizing the behavior and activity of these mosquitoes, and calling the district as soon as possible, so that we can send out our forces and our staff to suppress it, and hopefully prevent its infestation into our county. The second thing I wanted to quickly provide an update on is West Nile Virus, and as the map I put before you, you can see that in Orange County, we are currently experiencing the greatest number of West Nile Virus cases in our history. It currently stands at 218 human infections with five human deaths this year, 407 dead birds, and 477 positive mosquitoes.
Go ahead and continue. Sorry about that.
Appreciate that. In the city of Los Alamos, you have listed two human infections, and also, your dead birds, we have collected, sorry about that, six dead birds from the community. Interesting to note here, we have actually not collected any positive mosquitoes, but it just goes to show you that you should not be lulled into a false sense of security. Just because we haven't found positive mosquitoes does not mean that you cannot be infected in the city.
Right.
With that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Anyone questions? One of the things, Jared, that we got at our last meeting was some very clear pictures. These mosquitoes look very different. Brett, if we could put this sheet up, or picture as part of it, you can see that they've got a lot of white, I don't know if you can see it from here, but they're very dark in color with a lot of white, which makes them easy to distinguish, and you can't see it, but they've got a quarter here, and they're extremely small. So, those are some things that you can look for. In addition, we'll put up some other information on the website that we received from Vector. And let's see. Yeah, I was just going, okay. And we've been proactive here in Los Alamos, and we've actually put together, through John Underwood and the city manager, with Jared's help, a DVD that gives a great amount of information, it's going to be played on LATV. We've shared it with other communities, because we believe that the need is so significant this year, that it's just a good product for everyone to have access to. You can also go on to Vector Control's website and view that, if you miss it on TV, but there's a wealth of information, and we're just trying to do our best to keep this year as under control as we can. It's been the worst year, how many years now, Jared?
Since its introduction in 2004.
Yeah, so, it's really become a problem for us this year. So, no standing water around your house, because they can breed in the smallest amounts. And I thank you so much for coming, and we'll look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Thank you for the time.
All right. Next, we have Greg Schellenberger. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me this opportunity. My name is Greg Schellenberger, I'm a candidate for the Los Alamos Unified School District. The election's coming up on November 4th, I wanted to take a few minutes of your time and talk to you about my candidacy. My cause of action to get into the race was generated by my neighbors, who were talking about problems that they've had, you know, the lights issue that went on at the high school when they renovated the field, and I talked to them, and they asked me, they said, "We think that you could do a good job if you got in." And so, I threw my hat in the ring, and here I am. My take on the district right now, or the board, is that I don't feel that they respect the residents the way that they should. I think that, in the circumstances, in this particular case, that they, that, it's funny, the district and the board will take our tax dollars, and they'll take our donations and our generosity to the school district and the programs that they run, and then when something comes up that affects the quality of the life of the residents and the homeowners that border the school, they don't bother to notify, and they don't bother to create a discussion that may help ease some of the tensions and frustrations. You know, I have, I've lived in the Los Alamos-Rossmore area for 12 years. Currently, my wife and I live in College Park North. We have three boys in the district, one at Lee Elementary, one at the middle school of McCullough, and a freshman at Los Al High who plays freshman football right now. And my wife is a product of Los Al High, as Ms. Mahia knows.
Yes.
And her family lives in College Park North, and has lived there for 45 years, so we're kind of a hometown family. Even though I'm a recruit, I feel like a hometown person. Two of our boys were born at Los Alamos Medical Center. The school district has been fantastic for years, 40 years, since, almost since probably its inception. And that's caused by the community, and the parents, and it's caused by the connection with the parents and the teachers. The teachers are fantastic, I haven't met a teacher yet that I haven't enjoyed having my kids a part of their class. I think that, in order to continue to keep things going forward, we have to reunite the board with the community, to make sure that everyone's interests are looked out for. I don't, I think that in the future, when issues arise that may affect the community, that they should be notified, and there should be a discussion. One of the things that I would like to do is, within the confines of, you know, what the board can do, is create an opportunity for discussion for things, maybe outside of a board meeting, that could help ease some of the frustrations. Of course, the education of our community is the most important thing that the board does. And going forward, I think that Dr. Crop has done a fantastic job. I was very disappointed to read today that Dr. Johnson took the position at Fountain Valley, I think that's a big loss for us, and retaining talent in that district level, and the principals and the district office, I think is important. You know, one of the things we have to do is make sure that there is a clear path for teachers who want to be administrators, and have that talent, have that ability to work towards becoming an administrator, if they have that ability. Hopefully, we find somebody to fill Dr. Johnson's shoes from within, because the Los Al way is the best way for our community, and I think that that's always the best way to go. You know, as far as everything else, I've been walking the neighborhoods, talking to people, I've walked through almost every, from Rossmore to College Park East, through Greenbrook, you name it. I haven't been to Old Town Seal Beach yet, but I'm going there this weekend. So, I'm interested in talking to people, getting their ideas, understanding what they think about the district and the community. I've talked to many parents, I talked to a woman in Rossmore, who has a person, who has, a student at high school has cerebral palsy, and she was telling me some of her concerns about the way that the teachers handled her son, and, you know, I have a lot of experience from a parent's point of view, in many different aspects of the district, from CDC, the preschool, through the health office. I have a type 1 diabetic son who has special needs that we have to deal with all the time with the district. So, I have Erin Lawrence, the district nurse, I feel is a personal friend of mine, because she has taken care of my son at 5th grade camp, went there for a whole week with him. So, you know, I have a lot of experience from a parent's point of view. I think that the community needs to be reconnected, and I think that, you know, we can really move things forward and work together with the city, with the board, to make sure that that connection is always there. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Get to you.
I'm sorry. We're not at the agenda item, but you're welcome to speak now, if you'd like. Please state your name for the record.
Tom Von Hofgarden, 4702 Howard Avenue. Fourth of July, I think half of you know. I'm thinking of a possible compromise. Two years Safe and Sane, that'll let us continue our traditions, would give us time to fundraise, so we can put on a show that everybody can see, and we can be proud of. Through sports, special events, with the race on the base, wheels, wings, and rotors, Taste the Los Al, Sugar Beat, we have plenty of opportunities to raise money. We're asking for two years with Safe and Sane as a pilot program, so we can continue our little neighborhood thing, since it has moved out of our realm. And I think that'll give us enough time to actually pay for the whole show, and do it correctly, and it'll take the burden off of the budget altogether, even when the Bergman money doesn't even, stops coming in. That's basically what I'm looking at. I've I've, I've already told a couple of the members, I'll donate my time as the fireworks czar, and help with the donating, or whatever. And that way, at least for a couple of years, a little pilot program for our Safe and Sane, keep the kids happy, keep them at our house, at our barbecues, try to keep that going, till we can generate the money to put on. I mean, we can make this thing as big as we want. I mean, it could be like the Queen Mary, and you could have 100,000 people out there, and it'd make enough money to make money. But, you know, this way, it doesn't put any money out of anybody's pocket. We know they're not going to move them back. And it gives us time to prepare. And then, on a side note, double left turn on Lexington northbound, coming out of the base onto Catella, would be helpful. Right now, you've got a left turn, and then the other one's straight. And with the GI Joes coming out, if that center lane could turn left also, we could get twice as many out.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
JM Iveler, good evening, esteemed council members. In between this meeting and the next meeting, although it doesn't affect our city council for a change, there's actually going to be an election. You've heard from one candidate so far tonight. I'm here to say that on losalnews.com, we have requested information from certain candidates, and they have responded, a few of them have responded, and we've been posting that information up and making it available to the community. We've been inundated with various campaign flyers. Since my wife is Vietnamese, I get them in multiple languages. And it's obviously a very ugly campaign season out there. At Los Al News, we're trying not, we're trying to take away the ugly and just give facts. And hopefully, we're providing a service to those who want just the facts. In addition, I'd like to ask that if you are over the age of majority, and you're living here, you have an opportunity to vote. That isn't true in a number of states in this country right now. A number of states have said that your right to vote depends on whether you can get, pay for a birth certificate and get a photo ID. In other words, it's a poll tax. We don't have it in California. We're very fortunate. And it's really important that you take the time out. There's not that much time to please vote. It's that important. Thank you very much for your time. Have an outstanding evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name for the record.
My name's Robert Graham. I lived here in the city my whole life. It's been the issue of the fireworks. I heard what Mr. von Hofgarden said. I think it's feasible. I don't see where it should be a problem. We have enough enforcement to stop it now. I don't see why we wouldn't have enough people on the ground to make sure that it's safe. It's revenue generating. It can benefit a lot of groups in the city. And it keeps people here that want to come and, you know, to our retail, our restaurants. If there's nothing here, which is basically what we're going to be looking at, that's a huge loss of revenue for the city. And it, and it takes away a big tradition that we've had for a long time. I was here before the fireworks on the base, and I enjoyed as a kid, you know, setting up the ladder, and, you know, with the right supervision. I don't see where, if we have it safe and sane, it doesn't become unsafe and insane. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll go on, I'm sorry, closing that. Going to go ahead and close oral communications and move on to item seven, warrants.
I'll move the warrants, but I would like to mention that I've had dialogue with city staff and finance today on a number of items that I had issues with and concerns with, particularly relating to charges against LATV Fund, our Fund 28, and have been assured by staff that later action on the agenda will, will correct some of that. So I'll go ahead and move the item.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? All right, all in favor? Roll call, please. Councilmember Edgar?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Fushimoto?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Graham Mahia?
Aye.
Okay, we can move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on a specific item. Is there anything on the consent calendar that the council would like to pull?
I'd like to pull item E.
Item E. Anything else?
Yeah, BDF.
B is in boy?
B is in boy, D is in dog, F is in foxtrot.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll move the balance.
I had something that I wanted to pull, but just for purposes of moving this along quicker. City attorney, is there a way, since we're pulling all these items, we have people that are residents that need to get back to their families, can we take items nine A, discussion item, before the consent calendar, so that that gives the council the opportunity to speak freely and, and not feel rushed?
It's up to the mayor unless a majority of the council doesn't want to do that.
Okay, so I guess I'll pull the council. We do have residents here who'd like to speak, and if we're going to go ahead and pull several of the items on the consent calendar, is anyone opposed to allowing us to go on to item nine A, which is the Fourth of July fireworks, and then we can come back to the consent calendar? Fine, anyone? Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll go ahead and we'll take this out of order. We'll go ahead and move on to nine A, Fourth of July fireworks options. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and do a little bit of a staff report first, and then give the community the opportunity to make comments if we could.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This item is before you to discuss Fourth of July fireworks options, as directed by the city council in previous meetings. We had this item on the agenda at the last meeting, and it was moved to this October 20th agenda. And staff has researched the options and presented it in this staff report tonight. We want to discuss the option for the location of the fireworks display, and received direction from the council tonight on how to move forward with the Fourth of July fireworks display. There's also, in the recommendation, action as the council would deem appropriate regarding the Fourth of July fireworks display, including but not limited to the possibility of allowing the Safe and Sane fireworks. And we have background and discussion based on research that staff has done with our community partners that are involved in the Fourth of July fireworks show and putting on the display, including especially the information provided by the base and their position on the fireworks show. We researched, we talked to Rossmore, we talked to cities of Cypress, city of Seal Beach, who are all community partners in putting this show on. And with that, I will introduce Corey Lakin to give the more detailed staff report on this item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, and mayor and members of the city council, thank you very much. The Fourth of July fireworks spectacular, as we know it, began as a joint effort between Los Alamos, Cypress, Seal Beach, the community Rossmore, and the Joint Forces Training Base in 1998 as a, in response to a city survey that indicated the majority of residents at the time were in favor, or of banning the fireworks. So, that was in 1996, so a couple of years, year and a half later, they decided to come together and fund what's now known as the Fourth of July fireworks spectacular. For 22 years, the annual event was free for all who attended, and only in the last five years has there been a $5 charge for parking. Still free to any who want to walk onto the base, and still free for all men and women in the military. More than 20,000 people annually attend the event on the base to view the live entertainment, sample the food vendors, view the vendor booths, visit with the sponsors, and play in the family fun zone, as well as viewing the fireworks display. The last two years, the event was moved onto the tarmac and the runways of the, of the base, allowing for, plenty of room for parking, vendors, and spectators to enjoy the festivities as well as the fireworks display. Previously, the event was held just southeast of the main entrance, just south of the Carrier Row area. The city council had asked the staff to provide, bring back information about the two venues, which we have done. I will go through each of the, the partners that we've reached out to, that have provided us with information. Fireworks America has done the, the fireworks display for several years. They present a 22-minute show, per hour request for that length of a show, and operate with on our limited budget of only $18,500 last year. Fireworks America's staff indicated that they are able to display the fireworks in either location, as they have done in the past, so long as the fire marshal overseeing the event signs off on the show. But the size of the fireworks at the previous location is impacted due to the proximity of the houses versus out on the airfield, they could get larger in size. OCFA regulations prohibit residents from being within the fallout zone, so we are limited at the old location to a 500-foot fallout zone. Fireworks America has shot fireworks in both locations, and stated that due to the prevailing winds in the vicinity of the houses, they'd recommend only using three-inch shells in the previous location to ensure the safety of the participants and the homeowners. Additionally, like I said before, out on the airfield, they could go up to as large as eight-inch shells. Caveat to that, they could go even bigger, but once you get into 10-inch shells, it becomes a whole new ballgame of, of extra requirements put on them, and a significantly higher fee. If you look on page three of six, it shows you, for a three-inch shell, it's approximately $8 per shell. For an eight-inch shell, it's about $70. And again, for a 10-inch shell, it goes all the way up to $250 per shell. So it's a significant difference. So what they shot off last year was three, four, and five-inch shells, and at the previous location, it was three and four-inch shells. We reached out to the Orange County Fire Authority. They provided the, the city with information regarding their regulations and suggestions, as if OCFA were the lead agency, which they are not. The JFTB Fire is the lead agency. However, OCFA does assist the base fire department, as well as covering the jurisdictions on this side of the green line. OCFA stated that the use of a three, four, and five-inch shell would be sufficient in either location due to the necessary 500-foot radius. However, they would recommend an additional 50-foot buffer with the five-inch shells due to the prevailing winds leading towards the houses. They said as long as no residences are within the fallout zone, they are okay with it. But since there are several structures on the base within the fallout zone, that the JFTB would require, would need to give approval for those buildings. The California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, CGAPIA, read over our MOU with the base, and they stated that, that any claims arising out of or in connection with the Fourth of July would be the responsibility of the cities, mainly Cypress and Los Alamos, who signed the contract. Therefore, any claims of injuries or damage to person or property on the tarmac, dirt areas, or any, anywhere else on the base would be the responsibility of the cities to defend themselves and the JFTB. CGPIA also discussed the need to ensure those persons with disabilities need to be provided proper accommodations in order to enjoy the event like anyone else, included proper transportation for those in wheelchairs or those having difficulty walking. Therefore, they recommended that we contract with a licensed transportation company who can handle that. We looked into that, and the cost would be approximately $3,300 for that type of transportation throughout the, the length of the event. The city of Cypress recommended retaining the existing location for the fireworks. They listed seven reasons for keeping the show on the airfield, including the size of the area, cost for staff, equipment, water, liability, Americans with Disability Act compliance, parking, and the shell size. The Rossmore Community Services District staff received consensus from the RCSD Board to continue to conduct the event on the tarmac. The board unanimously agreed on this due to the amount of dust and gopher holes at the previous location. They all agree the event is significantly more enjoyable on the tarmac. The city of Seal Beach, as well, supports retaining the current location for the fireworks show for many reasons, including the fact that it accommodates a larger audience, minimizes ADA compliance issues, lowers liability risk, allows for larger fireworks shells to be used, and increases efficiency and the ease of setup, parking, and dismantling. The Joint Forces Training Base, who houses the event, has decided to keep the event of the show on the airfield for several reasons, which are outlined in one of the attachments. Some of the reasons include the issues of safety, security, emergency response in the previous location, the structures within the fallout zone, and the congestion of vehicular and pedestrian traffic in the previous location. JFTB Fire also included a more detailed description of their concerns with having the event in the old location. At the August 6th Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission meeting, the commissioners heard a presentation by staff recapping the event. The commission discussed the event and formally made a motion to recommend to the city council to keep the fireworks in the current location, due to it being better suited for the health, well-being, and safety of the community. There were several residents from the Carrier Row neighborhood and beyond who presented the city council with a formal petition, asking the city council to move the fireworks show back to its original location, located just south of their neighborhood. They stated that they understand the pros and cons and are aware of the risks, however, they prefer the previous location. Staff, over, over the several past weeks, staff have come up with several alternatives, which is not all-inclusive, it's just a few, that provide various choices that the city council may or may not act on. At its current location, the city council could choose to increase funding to raise the height of the fireworks show. The, for the same cost as the 2014 show, a new, higher show could be produced. However, it would significantly reduce the number of fireworks shells from 2250, 2,253 shells, down to only 278 shells. An alternative solution could be to combine the two shows and create a larger production that allows for the 2014 show, plus the enhancement of the additional 278 larger shells that would have an estimated cost of around $12,000 to $13,000. Staff can work with the JFTB and with Cypress to consider moving the show to a different location out on the airfield. Moving it northeast from its current location may provide a better line of sight for those living in the Carrier Row neighborhood. However, this may negatively impact the Highlands neighborhood, Rossmore, and Seal Beach. And, and because of the staging and storage of the helicopters that may or may not be located on the base, obviously, moving the show may or may not be possible. I know last year, I believe it was for the race on the base, there were about 18 helicopters that came in from Hawaii, and they needed to stage them and certainly, and that, on a different air, storage area that would be kind of the location that we may be able to move to. So, but we can definitely have that discussion with the base. We could provide a bus for residents in the Carrier Row neighborhood, or those walking onto the base to board and be transported to the fireworks site before the 9:00 PM show. Costs less than $500 per bus for four hours to take as many trips back and forth from the front of the base to the tarmac area, so residents can come onto the base and enjoy the show from the airfield. Additionally, Mayor Graham Mahia has requested council have the ability to discuss the options of allowing Safe and Sane fireworks on a temporary basis for two years. Currently, ordinance number 492 prohibits the sale, use, or discharge of fireworks except at a city-authorized public display. Should the council wish to allow such direction, it could be provided to staff to bring forward an ordinance for consideration at a future council meeting. Just one of the several attachments included an Orange County grand jury release, report that was released in 2007, 2008, describing the anatomy of Safe and Sane fireworks sales in Orange County. Just to wrap it up, one of the goals of the Fourth of July fireworks spectacular since 2010 has been to have the event revenue expenditure offset. Staff have worked hard to- Staff have worked hard to secure several sponsors, again this year assisting with this goal, raising $30,000 in sponsorships. The City of Seal Beach and Rossmore Community Services District contribute a collective $14,200 towards the event. A nominal parking fee raises another $9,000 to $10,000 for the event, as well as the city charging for food vendors, vendor space, and receiving a percentage of the ticket sales for the family fun zone. Annual expenditures are around $56,000, with revenues totaling around $65,000 this past year. The event has not cost the general fund, any funding for the event's direct costs since 2009. The excess revenues have been carried over for the past five years, helping to prepare for the event, once Republic Services is no longer contractually obligated to contribute $15,000. That's the end of my report. There are several attachments with the responses from the different agencies. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them at this time.
Great, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name for the record. Hi.
Hi. My name's Mike Spillane, and I live in Carrier Row, Antarua. And I've lived there for over 20 years, and during that time, we've had the fireworks, you know, in effect, kind of down the street. And since it's been moved, I've noticed that at least neighborhood participation and stuff like that is declining. Anyone in the previously had driven around down there would note that there was virtually no parking, there were families, things like that. I happened to go on to Google Earth, and I counted in Carrier Row and New Dutch Haven, there's 473 homes, which is about, roughly about 2,000 people live there. So this has affected a majority of those people. For years, family and friends would gather, you know, people, the fireworks were kind of the culmination of a barbecue or that evening. And now that it's moved out onto the base, that's kind of disappeared. So there are a lot of compelling reasons for being in the middle of the base, but it has adversely affected several thousand people on top of that. And the, I'm not sure what the exact solution is. The safe and sane fireworks is a kind of an interesting idea, but I think ultimately, what we really need to look at is the show itself, and what benefit there is to the people of Los Alamos. As it moves further away from us, which it's done by moving out onto the base, I can see if you live in Seal Beach or in Cypress, you have advantage, a sight advantage now, but it has affected about maybe a quarter to a fifth of all the people in Los Alamos. And I think that's, you know, that's not a good thing. And really, the council and moving, need to really look at either the bigger fireworks that go higher, I know that's a lot more money. I found it kind of humorous that we could get more fireworks, or taller ones, but it would reduce them by like 90% by the same expenditure. So I really think that we need to look at ways to raise money to, for a bigger fireworks display, taller, or you know, more altitude, so that more people can enjoy it. And also the possibility of moving it to a different location on the base where the people in Carrier Row and New Dutch Haven and those areas have, can enjoy it and have better sightlines. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Art DeBolt. I live over in the suburbia tract in Los Alamos, and we're west, west of the show. My main concern about the item that you're discussing is the, is the possibility that it could either be eliminated or radically reduced, and more or less in a, that would be contrary to the agreement, the social agreement that a prior council years ago had with the people of Los Alamos when we gave up, or they, you know, gave up the safe and sane fireworks. And in return, it was promised that there would be, at some point, a better show, a better, you know, something better for everybody, and safer, et cetera. And we had that, okay? And just in the last couple of years, it's changed. In our neighborhood, we could look down the street, and I mean, I've walked to the base many times when the children were younger, and walked on and sat under the fireworks. Great experience. Grew up doing that on different military bases and growing up, and the military always put it on. I don't think the city ever had to do anything. But it's a different issue today, I guess. But the main thing is that you have tradition, you have, it's the birth of the nation, it is, you know, it's part of what we do as Americans. And apart from the barbecues and that type of a thing, you end the evening watching the fireworks. And to a lot of people, it is convenient, you know, to sit out, like in the Carrier Row area, in our area. And yeah, you don't have, you don't see everything, but if they're high enough, you know, it's good. I keep saying, we need to cut that tree down, then we'd be better. But now you fast-forward to where we are today, and I, the residents of Carrier Row have a valid argument, a complaint, and staff came up with, I think, a pretty good solution, and that is to somehow move, move the line of sight, move the, keep it on the tarmac if you have to, but move it out far enough and up a little bit to where you are in the line of sight of Carrier Row. And if you can increase the height of the show, then whatever is given up by the Highlands or even in our area, more people will be able to see it. I mean, including, you know, probably even going into Rossmore if they're high enough. And of course, cost is a constraint, but I will just tell you that I don't think it should be. I think these are one of these items that the city should, you bite the bullet, you pay it, you pay the price. This is for the people. I mean, if you want to, you want to have a packed house, make the motion to end it. And whoever, and whoever is, wants to second that motion, I think would be, I don't think it would go anywhere. We need to keep it. It's tradition, and we need to find the compromise. If that's the, a staff recommendation to raise it and move it a little bit, then do it. And if there's money that needs, if the people can come forth and raise the money, great. If not, then the city should fund it. There's enough loose money floating around. We all see the waste. You can find $10,000 or $15,000 in an instant.
Thank you.
We all know that. Thank you.
Good evening. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Suzie Barnhill. I'm a Carrier Row resident. My house, in fact, is in the fallout zone. I was a little bit concerned on your report, sir, when you said the date of the initial extravaganza, because I've lived in this town and in Carrier Row for about 30 years, and I know that I watched a fireworks show from my backyard prior to 19...
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. Excuse me.
Oh, I apologize.
Because it has been going on since, I lived in my house two doors down from where I live now, and I've been there since 1987. The Fourth of July is an American tradition, and celebrating it with your family is an American tradition, and we all have a right to that. What has happened in the last two years has altered our family tradition, and I, it's a little bit disturbing. And I'm not trying to be the selfish one that gets to have the party in the backyard and sees all the fireworks. That's great, that's benefit. But to have people no longer want to come and see me on the Fourth of July because there's nothing to see is very disappointing. I do have one other concern, too, though. If the tarmac and the base is so involved with all these people on the runway and in that section of the base, it makes me wonder if perhaps our security is being compromised. In this day and age, it seems like the Fourth of July might be a great opportunity for people with ill intent to try to pull off something bad. And if they don't have access to the runways in order to defend our community, to me, that might seem like a poor use of resources. And I just want to sum it up with saying one thing. I was talking to my husband about this, and I said, you know, they took the fun out of our neighborhood. And he said, no, they took our neighborhood out of the fun. And that's how I feel.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Two meetings ago, council member Kuzimota said, "Come back and tell us how we can do this." And I heard how we can't yet again. I heard about gophers in a place where actually, I believe, they've taken the field and they're turning it into a park. So, you know, obviously, we're not trying to solve the problem. We've had some solutions come from the community. We'll raise the money. Give us a couple of years, and we'll go out and we'll start fundraising, and we'll create a nonprofit, we'll go out and we'll raise the money, and we'll do it, so the money will be there. I've heard, well, we can cut down by almost 90%, and just do 90% of the, 10% of the show and do it real high. It'll be over in five minutes, but you'll have, you'll be able to see it. That's not an answer. I don't know what the answers are. We do have a commission that could have worked all of this and presented something to us next month with commission recommendations. That would have been nice. We can still have a commission take all of this and work with the community and the affected neighborhoods and the affected people, and try to come up with recommendations that actually are recommendations to try to do what Warren said, make something work for everybody. It's nice to know that Cypress would like to have the residents continue to view it, and Seal Beach the same. But, you know, the bottom line is, it was moved out of the area for a reason. The reason doesn't exist anymore. The reason it was moved was because they were building a facility. The facility was built, and the reason doesn't exist anymore. Now, I've heard a lot of reasons to keep it there, and I know that thousands of people have said that they don't want to keep it there. They would like to return it to where it was, and I haven't really heard a good reason why it couldn't go back there, because the reason it was moved is gone. The construction's complete. I would love to see this sent to a commission that actually works with REX, and this is their area. This is actually something big they could work on. And maybe bring people from the community in with our ideas on options that are available, and come back to the city council with something which says, "These are the options that the community has agreed on. These are the options that the commission has worked with the community on, and these are options that we should be considering." I don't think it has to be decided at this meeting, but I think what we have to do is use our commission. They're there for that reason. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Perfect timing. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Please step forward. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Mayor Mahia. Thank you, Mayor, council. This item, I find it interesting, because it wasn't but about, maybe three years ago, that this whole thing was almost just wiped right off the table because of lack of funding. The idea was before the council to just scrap the entire Fourth of July spectacular. So now that there's been some sponsorship and some other things have changed to get this whole thing kind of stand on its own, now it sounds very much like staff is wanting to say, nope, this is the way it is, and that's the way it's going to be. And I think that's a dangerous place to be. I think the thing that needs to happen is, is you try different things. I mean, it may not get solved tonight, it may not get solved this year, but you keep trying until you find the fix. The thing that worries me about having higher fireworks is, in my experience, it's not necessarily the height, although that's part of it, but because of the position of Los Alamos to where the fireworks are fired off with the offshore breeze, it's the smoke and all of the discharge that blocks the view, and the further it gets away, all you're getting is the smoke screen, and you don't see the fireworks. And that's kind of, nobody's kind of brought that up, and I think that that's something, doesn't matter how high you shoot them, you're going to still get that, it's just that they've been moved further and further away, so you can't even see them because of the smoke debris and all of the fallout. So finding another solution, I don't know, you know what I mean? Have all your stuff on the tarmac and fire the fireworks off in the old spot and let it be that. The thing, too, about Carrier Row is those people have suffered over the years, and having to deal with all of the parking, all of the congestion, and all the people trying to get through that neighborhood and park, because they didn't want to try and get on the base and park, they wanted to walk in. And, you know, my in-laws lived right there, Antarua, and for years, it was, it was a battle to have a little bit of space in front of the house with all the people coming in, not wanting to park on the base. And Carrier Row has put up with that for years, and that's just one of the other things. And there weren't a lot of complaints about it, it just was dealt with, you know? But now that there's parking and paid parking on the thing, and it's grown into this other thing, Carrier Row is just kind of getting forgotten. And this is the Los Alamos fireworks spectacular, and if Los Alamos were to pull out of the funding, what would then happen to the show? You know, I've been to shows at high school football stadiums that are surrounded by the school, surrounded by homes directly, large shows in Orange County. How that happens, you know, I think that should be looked at, you know? So those are my concerns, and I thank you for working this issue, and maybe a solution can be found. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? We got one more.
Hi, I'm Barbara Wheatley. I just want to say that almost seven years ago, I was invited to my very first Los Alamos experience with the Fourth of July, at a wonderful family home. And I went around on my bicycle this last July, and it was gone. The community, the love, people walk in the streets, riding their bikes, saying hello, going from house to house, to barbecue to barbecue, was gone. The streets were empty, families weren't together. I miss that. I moved here, to this city, six years ago, because of what I saw. And you've got a great opportunity to fix this, there's got to be a way to fix it. So please put your minds together and come up with a way to bring us back to the city we were before I moved here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, if we could, Doug, if you could pan to the audience, I know a lot of people are afraid to speak. Can I see the hands of the people who are here that are choosing not to speak regarding this issue? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the council. I will, just for a bit of information, and it's not my chance to speak, I just want to make you all aware, there was a meeting today of the Joint Forces Training Base and the Elected Officials Group, a group that actually Mr. Edgar helped initiate some years ago. It's pretty effective. And we were told very clearly that the fireworks show is not going to be moved back for the reasons that were stated in the letter sent from the Joint Forces Training Base. And in addition to that, the second item about potentially moving the fireworks further down the airfield is more than likely not something that they can do for logistic reasons, and also that's where they keep their Blackhawks. And so that truly is not really an option for us to consider. So I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council, and I just wanted you all to be aware of that before we, you know, belabor the issue and talk about it repeatedly when we've been given a definitive answer. Who'd like to go first?
I'd love to jump in.
Mr. Belz, moving forward. As the mayor just said, really, there's, in my mind, this is really made up of three issues. One is the location, two is the safe and sane question, three is the hire, shooting the fireworks hire. Number one, I think the location, frankly, I think we're stuck with it. So I don't really think that's going to be much of an option. Safe and sane, we could start the process to review it. As J- As JM mentioned, something perfect for the park commission to, to take a look at. I'd also want to have police and fire weigh in. I did note in the grand jury report, they called it organized mayhem, which concerned me a little bit. But, you know, we're a great community and it's, maybe it's something we could work out. However, the third one, I think, really is, is where our answer lies. And that's in shooting the fireworks higher so that everybody can enjoy it from their homes at Carrier Row and Dutch. You know, there's a big group that meets at St. Hedwig's. And there's people that meet at the parks in the Highlands. So, there's many, many parts of the community would benefit from the higher fireworks. The big question, I thought Art made a good point when he said, you know, well, we need to make this happen. And, and I feel we do. I think my czar has left already, but, or maybe he's outside. But, you know, I really appreciate Tom coming forward and not only coming up and being, stating what the problem is, but really being part of the solution. And, you know, we all recognize Carrier Row is a great community. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure that this movement has decimated that party. I remember the party in 1976. I live in the Highlands. We had 40 police cars, so we basically had a riot with, with the safe and sane and the big, we had a band. I mean, it just, it just got crazy. But it's a lot of fun. So, what I, what I would like to propose is this, is that we have the mayor and the community leaders from Carrier Row meet with the city attorney, figure out what fundraising we can do for next year. And we're getting a late start, but let's figure out what we can do. We do have a surplus in, in this project that we've been trying to build up for the day that, that the trash contract no longer contributes. Correct, Rick?
We do. That surplus is in effect because Cypress is our partner on the staffing and the logistics of it is, is shared with Cypress, but there is a carryover of that amount. And the plan is to be able to use that someday when the other funding goes away.
So, we have, you know, according to the staff report, we have a $12,000 to $13,000 issue, which is, is not the end of the world. And we probably, from, from the numbers you gave, we're making a $9,000 profit if my math is about right.
This year, correct.
This year, okay. So, you know, we're, we're almost there with, with a little fundraising effort. And as I said, I really appreciate Tom coming forward with that, with that idea. A little coordination, this is very doable. The, just to recap, the other issues are not as doable. I think, you know, shooting them higher is the first option. Safe and sane would take some research to see if that really is an option. The location, from what the base and everybody else has told us, I don't, I don't think we're going to win that one. So, I'd rather concentrate our efforts on working together and having the city come up with the plan with, with you to, to raise the money. And then, as we go on, who knows? I mean, we, you know, we may, we may get very good at fundraising for this and maybe the show gets bigger. But, you know, $12,000. Who was the speaker? Mike. Mike spoke about, you know, that this affects 2,000 people. You know, that's, that's a sixth of our community. I, I think we should probably be able to find $12,000, worst case, if, if, if nothing else was to happen, if, you know, if it affects. And it, you only pick the, the areas near you. It also would, a higher fireworks would, would enhance the show for other people. You know, it definitely is a money in, money out type of thing. All of you who were at the base last year and saw what happened, I saw this spectacular Old Ranch show. I was shocked to find out though that that cost over three times what we spent, that a private entity put on a $60,000 show. So, you know, we're, we're going to have to figure out what, how to get the most bang for our buck and maybe how to raise a few bucks. But it's, it's very doable. And I, several speakers have spoken about the fact that, that we can do it. And I think it's, it is very doable. And I think that Carrier Row Group is, is a great group to do it. And maybe we can, you know, involve people who benefit in the Highlands and other areas too in, in our fundraising. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Warren?
I want to thank the staff for this report. And I guess do have a few questions. So, Corey, refresh my memory. So, why was the fireworks moved from the grassy area to the tarmac? That was two years ago.
For, mainly for safety reasons. If you look at Attachment...
I don't remember it that way, so...
It's mainly from Attachment 7. The base fire put together a page and a half of reasons that they moved it. Crowd concerns, security concerns, fire and special hazard concerns, crowd control.
Because I, I recall, sorry to interrupt you, but I recall it was, I thought, a temporary movement because of the logistics of the place where we're at and, and it was, the tarmac was temporary. That, that's what I recall, so...
Not, not that I'm aware of. I know in speaking with base fire, they had talked about trying to move it for a while and it was...
The decision to move, that was when Angie was the director?
Two years ago. No, that was while I was, while Angie was city manager and I was the director.
Okay, okay. So, I, I just wanted to get that clarification. The other thing on the, the part about Seal Beach's letter of support saying about the reduces liability, they basically have no liability, correct? I think you read that the C, the California JPIA says that the agreement is between the cities of Cypress and Los Alamos signed the agreement with the base.
They, correct. They do not, they're not on the MOU, but they do occasionally provide...
Right. So, Seal Beach is, Seal Beach's reasons for it as far as liability has nothing to do with Seal Beach. It's just really between Cypress on the liability question. It's between Cypress and Los Al. Correct?
Unless their PD are working, in which case then they're involved from that perspective.
But that would be still our JPIA, the claim would be against us, I would believe, but that's fine.
Likely.
Okay. Now, the other thing that I, I guess question on the, the higher shells in the current location on the tarmac, does the fallout zone increase then?
Yes.
And what's the increase to? How many?
Depends on the, the size of the shell is about 100-foot radius from there. So, an eight-foot shell would go to an 800-foot fallout zone.
Okay, so, will that start encroaching on the golf course then?
I believe on the map that we did, it would come close, but probably likely would not encroach. The, the, the current location where it's at, it's close to 1,000 feet from, from the, the golf course and I believe 1,200 or 1,400 feet from the spectators.
Okay. And then, and then I think you brought up about the, the negative effect, the potential negative effect to the Highlands, the Rossmore Highlands and I don't know the other area that you mentioned. But they, in the past, I mean, were negatively affected when it was in the other location, right? So, this, this is more of an enhancement that they get to enjoy that the rest of us don't get to. So, so a little bit about my neighborhood. I live in College Park North and we have a Fourth of July picnic and parade, cheese little parade, which is really fun. And then the neighbors, what we would do is that we'd go to that high school field over there, Laurel Field, and we'd bring our chairs at night and park them out there, have hot chocolate and cookies and we'd, you know, further have some enjoyment of our neighbors. And we have not been able to do that for the last two years because we can't see the fireworks. So, I'm really a strong believer in moving it to the previous location where it was. I understand that the base is not being supportive of that. I would hope that we would have used all avenues as possible to, to find a way to make it work, addressing the concerns. But, you know, maybe there's some hope there. And as much as I am not in favor of safe and sane fireworks, I will support it because I think, you know, want to hear the, the, our neighbors in Carrier Row talk about how their, their family get-togethers are just impacted. And, and I know firsthand from my neighborhood, we're impacted from this. I, I really don't like the idea of safe and sane, but if that's what it takes to get the families together to enjoy the, you know, celebrate our independence of this great nation, then, then by golly, I'll support that. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Dean, do you have anything?
This is a complex issue with a lot of, of concerns. I think that Mayor Tim Murphy helped me kind of hone all of this in, saying that there were three issues as he saw and I tend to agree. Location, the value of safe and sane and, and shooting them higher. One of the things that's not been discussed at this particular point, and I don't know, I'll just make a guesstimate of 10,000 to 12,000 people actually did go onto the base and onto the tarmac and participated in what I would call organized activities, bounce houses and things like that for the kids. There was food there. They were able to park their cars on a solid surface and journey over to the viewing area. I actually watched a number of people just stay with their cars and view there, almost like a tailgate type of party. The other item that he talked to Murphy, Mayor Tim Murphy talked about was the hype. Nothing prevents anyone from any neighborhood in the city to go and enjoy the show, period. It's free. It's open to anyone. They can park on the base. There is a $5 fee. When you boil down all of our issues, what we're talking about is money. Money can solve anything. Several years ago, there was an issue where it appeared like the show wasn't going to occur because money wasn't available. And we had a resident of Rossmore that came to the city council and offered $15,000 out of his own bank account because it was important to him to see the community continue to enjoy the fireworks for the same reason that most everybody that spoke did. And that's the history of the country, the opportunity. It's a, it's a national holiday. And I don't think this council wants to do anything to impede any of that. The base has been a good partner with us on a number of activities and events throughout the years and currently. We're still, we're still dealing with several other significant issues, the pool being one of them. The fact that there are changes occurring on the base. They've added two brand-new headquarters buildings. There's reference that the grassy area where this was held before, that area has never been grassy. That area is full of dirt and potholes. This past weekend, when I was over on the base, it was full of pup tents and it was a drill weekend. And it came to like more to me that when our soldiers, the citizen soldiers that participate in the National Guard go on their weekend tours or their weekend trainings, they actually live in tents right there on the ground with all of the gophers and the other activities. We've had issues with animals and wildlife and it seems like when we've attempted to try and address the gopher, or I'm sorry, the, the coyote issue, gophers show up and the gophers bring in birds. And so, now what they're experiencing over there is bird strikes on the planes, which is not a good thing from a safety aspect because that means once a plane goes airborne, there's no Hudson River for them to land in should they get struck by birds and lose motors and things like that. So, that's a grave concern that I see in the process. We've kind of messed with Mother Nature who has a process over there. And, you know, all of this can be solved, again, with money. We can pay for bigger shells. We can do more. The problem that we've been faced with over the years is the funding for this show has been challenged and dried up. And if it weren't for the refuse contract that was established, that designated somewhere in that process that they would spend $15,000 a year to help offset this, that $15,000 going away is going to have a, a major impact. But as the staff reported, the actual show itself costs over $56,000. And so, sponsorships have been a, a major source to that. And I doubt that a number of the people that go to the show pay much attention to who's sponsoring it, what group, whether it's Southland Credit Union or Alamitos Eye Care or any of the others that normally contribute. Our refuse contract with Republic is going to be ending probably in two years. Their funding is going to probably end with this year's show. We're going to have to come up with that. So, the fundraising aspect that was brought up by several speakers is enchanting. I look at the report that the grand jury did and they made a, a summary of five nonprofits that had gross incomes ranging from a low of $19,000 to a high of $34,500. The percentage of profits that they raised ranged between 3% and 14%. So, the idea of creating a nonprofit within the community for the sole purpose of doing the fireworks show seems to me that it can be a problem because even at the highest net income of these five groups, and this is $2,007, was $6,600. So, we're still a long way from the $56,000 that's being spent right now. We need to get together, community-wise, city-wise, and address this event, much like the community has gotten behind Wings, Wheels &amp; Rotors and the community and sponsors have gotten behind the race on the base and find a solution. And I agree with virtually every one of the speakers, it can be done and we can figure something out. We're creative enough to be able to do that. The mere fact that the city staff has been able to find sponsorships to offset this, even to the extent where there's been money left over each year to be used going forward. If we really concentrated on this, we could figure out a way to do it. I'm not sure that hire is better. I think if there's issues, I value family quality of life issues like everyone else that lives in this town. And to do things and to have parties and events in Carrier Row and then culminate it with the fireworks show, I agree with Councilor Mayor Tim Murphy that if they can do a $60,000 show over at Old Ranch, great. I've known for a number of years that the Navy Golf Course charges for people to come on to the Navy Golf Course and advantage, and take advantage of the show we offer for free. We don't get any of that money. Unfortunately, that part of the base is, is run by the Navy and it's money they raised for their morale and welfare fund. I like the idea of passing this on to a commission on one side. And on the other side, I don't want to keep the can further down the road. I just, we have done enough. I believe Councilmember Kuzamoto said he had some issues or wanted to make sure that police and, and fire were involved. I think we've gotten their feelings from police, fire, all of the primary participants at this particular point. I, I would like to see us do some type of a community summit, maybe facilitated with the, with the commission or even the council. And sit down and, and do what we've done here a little bit and that's just brainstorm on how we might address the problem. And the problem, quite frankly, is money. Safe and sane, if we, if we even undertook that, we have people coming to us when coyotes jump fences worried about their kids. Every year at fireworks time, you hear of youngsters holding something that they shouldn't, even under adult supervision and sustaining burns. The fire department would be opposed to that. The, if we were to put on a ballot measure to consider safe and sane, the amount of money being spent on that type of a ballot, pro and con, would take care of this. being spent on that type of a ballot, pro and con, would take care of this show. So I don't think we really want to go that route from the standpoint of Safe and Sane. I think what we want to try and do is figure out the solution that benefits the entire community. I'm sure the folks over in Parkwood, over on the other side of the base, enjoy the fireworks the same way. They're not as big, and they're not here vocal from that standpoint. But I really feel if we got together and engaged with the community and tried to come up with some solutions and figure out who could do what, you know, quite honestly, the show has been put on by the city, and the staff has done the majority of the heavy lifting in finding the sponsors and being able to put the show on. If this means that much to the community, then by all means, let's partner, let's figure out how we find the necessary funding so that the show is enjoyable for everyone. Again, it would seem to me like we're talking, in today's dollars, $60,000 would get the job done. We have sponsorship coming in. How do we raise the difference and realize that we're going to lose $15,000 of it when the agreement with Republic goes away? So my support to my colleagues here would be to try and do something, maybe a little novel, do a town hall meeting, do something of that nature where everybody could come and help us from the standpoint, figure out what the best way is. If fundraising, it doesn't have to be a nonprofit. The city can accept donations, much like we did when the gentleman gave us $15,000 to put the show on. Doesn't need to be a nonprofit to accomplish that. But if there's people out there, if the residents of Carrier Row, you know, want to self-assess, want to do things to that nature, we know what the budget's going to be, we know what the target number needs to be. Let's just figure out how we can get there and do it, and make this a good family program for everybody, for the entire community, not focused on any one neighborhood. As I said, nothing prevents anyone in any neighborhood, whether it's College Park North or Carrier Row, the Highlands, from going onto the base and seeing the show there. It's, do you want to stay home and watch what you can see in the process? I drive up and down Cotella when the show is going on, and there's not a business or area around there that doesn't have people, Cottonwood Church, full of cars, all waiting to watch the show. So it's good for the community, it's good for everyone else, let's just figure out the best way we can continue it. We're good for this year, we're really talking about 2016 and beyond. Thank you, I'll pass it back.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Carrier Row neighbors for coming out and expressing your concerns and very constructively, you know, bringing this to our attention. I think, I also share that I think that there's a solution to be had here, and I think that it's something that we can work on together. You know, just, I guess to summarize and then to give a little bit of a commentary is I would be very supportive of having the Parks and Recreation Commission take a look at this. I do see it as probably boiled down from Rich's three to two issues, which is funding and Safe and Sane. The funding, you know, Art Nibolt got up and talked about, hey, we should have some money just available, we should be able to suck that up. You know, we, you know, just to give the community some data points, the, you know, we ended up closing our budget with very close to, you know, $15,000 to $20,000 surplus. We, you know, we had issues with that. We just settled a labor agreement, which we're going to talk about, that we moved to the end of the meeting. And one of the biggest sticking points was an amount that was very similar to this. And so these are, you know, in a small city like Los Alameda's, this city puts on events that are way bigger than we should ever take on, but we do it. If you look at the Wings, Wheels &amp; Rotors, if you look at the Fourth of July, if you look at the race on the base, you look at all the swimming that takes place at the pool, over 80, 60,000 to 80,000 people cycle through those events. You know, Tom got up and he started talking a little bit about the relationship, and hey, you know, he was willing to meet halfway and try to find, you know, if there's a middle ground. And I think that was the great first step. Because, you know, if you put yourself in the position of where the base is, you know, we are very lucky as a small community to have the partnership that we have at the base. And they really, if you think about it, and they should, and they did, so I'm not giving them kudos for doing their job, but they, you know, they really went through the evaluation of whether they can move it or not, and what was the reasons, and all of the other communities that partake in this. And it definitely takes four to five different organizations to make this thing happen, just like almost every other event we have on the base. And so, you know, I think that it's important, and so, you know, if I was leaning one way, you know, it would be towards increasing the funding. But I also realize, as the financial guy that's really focused on that here is that I don't know how we afford it, you know, in this economy. So that fundraising offer that you guys threw out there was very entertaining to me. I personally, my wife and I would dedicate the first $500 to that, to get it up and off the ground. I, you know, I feel that strongly about it. But you really need to do the heavy lifting to get the additional funding there, or I don't see how we pay for it. You know, for me, you know, it's all about experiences, right? So my, I live in Greenbrook, like Warren, you know, he's over on the other side. In my community or my part of the city, you can't see anything, you know, really can't. I, you know, I guess if you went to the school, I never tried that, the Laurel, but for me, the last two years going to the base and watching the event as a participant of just going, not having, I never had the barbecue in the backyard with being able to look. The last two years have been a much better event to attend. It may not be good for the people that lived around the base, that's finding the middle ground, but if you go to that event, you know, on the tarmac, you know, I think it was organized well, it was really well laid out, it was comfortable this time, you know, for the last two years. And, you know, my first reaction was, God, I wish everybody could come to this event and see how good it is. But listening to everybody, I totally appreciate what you're talking about in the community and having that feeling of being able to just look at this event from your backyard and your community. So again, my offer to the community is, I want to be a part of the fundraising process. I do support, you know, Jerry or the mayor being the lead to the community and start working together, because I could tell how important it is. You know, we keep talking about the gentleman in the Rossmore that helped by donating 15 grand, that was Kenny Brandyberry, and we should always talk about him, because that guy is always there for the community, and he's the first person to raise his hand to say, hey, I want to help. And, you know, and I think in this situation, you know, we're going to get hit with the 15 grand from Republic when their obligation ends. We are already 9,000 short, so we're at 25,000 short now, before we add 15,000 to 20,000 on top of that for this addition. So we're at 50 grand that we need to raise. I mean, so let's have the numbers be very specific about the numbers, and let's try to work together to raise it. I think the issue that the commission's going to have to deal with is what happens in the interim. I personally am not, you know, the most supportive of the Safe and Sane, only because being on the Orange County Fire Authority, you see all the statistics, even in the staff report, I encourage everybody to read it, you know, it talks about, you know, the problems that some of the cities have taken on with that. And think about this, at the foot of the base, where 20,000 people go into the Fourth of July, we're going to insert Safe and Sane fireworks there too. It seems like there would be some sort of public safety issue. So I would like to have the commission take a look at what Rich called the organized mayhem, make sure that we have the cost covered on the law enforcement side to make sure that we can do this if we're going to have a balance for that two-year period to do some sort of interim, you know, event to be able to bridge this. I don't think, unless there's a significant amount of influx in the city, I don't know how we fund it the first year. So the big issue that we need to take on is, you know, the council with this part of the community, how do we bridge the first two years? And let's work with the commission to do that, let's see if we can find a way to do fundraisers. I mean, and, you know, and I think it goes for every member of this council, anything that we can do to help with the fundraising and come over, you know, whatever it is. I mean, we're willing to help, but if we can't raise the money, then we need to kind of come back financially to the commission and to the city manager and find out, well, how do we fund it in the short term? I personally don't see the extra money that everybody's talking about that we have there. But again, I want to be constructive, and I'd like to try and find a solution. And again, I can't say enough how appreciative I am that you guys have brought this in and consistently came and said, hey, look, this is really important to us. Thank you.
This is something that I've been pushing for since two years ago. Initially, I said, maybe we could get more money from the general fund so that we could have the higher fireworks, so everyone could experience that and retain that tradition that they have all throughout the community, whether it's in Warren's neighborhood, where they go to the park, or in Carrier Row, where they go to certain houses, or whether it's in suburbia, where they can see it. I think that more people are affected by this, it's just Carrier Row is galvanized, and they come forward and they express their opinions. So for those of you out there who think that this is just something that we're trying to do for Carrier Row, that's not the case. You have multiple city, or multiple neighborhoods along the edge of the base that were benefiting from this, and now are not. I break this down to three things. I break it down to priority, I break it down to community, and I break it down to tradition. The priority is, what is our priority? Is our priority to have an event on the base and to continue to grow it? Because if that's the case, that's not what the intent was from the beginning. The beginning was, in lieu of giving up your Safe and Sane fireworks, we will provide you with a show that you can enjoy, and that is no longer the case. Now, you could argue that, you know, these people can go onto the base, but that brings me to tradition. The tradition is, when I grew up here, we were able to use Safe and Sane, and amazingly, we all made it out of this safe. And so when I hear the reports about the fire authority saying how dangerous they are, I'll tell you what, we used to have Roman candles, and you stuck them out like this, and it shot balls of fire, and we all survived, and we all lived, and we all enjoyed it, and we love it, and it's some of my most fond memories of this community. Because then, what it did, is it brings me to my third point, it created a community environment that people knew their neighbors. I'm looking at Loretta, who, I grew up down the street from her, I went to school with her son, and she's here tonight, even though it's late into the evening, and I'm sure she doesn't want to be, because I think that she also remembers what the community environment used to be, and how we were able to main that to some degree with the base show, but now that that is out of our sight, now it's just completely removed. And I think that when you talk about tradition and community, those are two of the most important things you can have, and I think that's why Los Alameda's is so wonderful, because we're small and we know each other. I can't tell you how many times we go to events that we wish we didn't see people that we knew, because they've always got something they want to bring up that they're not happy about, but that is part of the environment here, it's the Mayberry kind of feel. So I want to address a couple of things before I go on. Just for facts, the fireworks show is now 4,000 feet further away from where it was. So I think that that is huge in causing the obstruction and the inability to see the fireworks, along with what Mr. Mejia said, which is the smoke that is generated by these. So I think that that is one of the key issues. Also, there was a statement made by our staff that there's negative impacts to both Rossmore, Cypress, and Seal Beach. Well, I'll tell you, after seeing this agenda, I was feeling a little beside myself, because what we asked staff to do was to go out and find out a way to bring this back. But as opposed to that, they went to each of the cities, and it was a very, very simple question. Do you like it better in the position where it's at, or in the location it used to be? Well, that's very easy, I could answer that. I don't particularly like that we had to sit in the dirt either, but that's not what we asked you to do. And I spoke to some of the representatives from those cities that are the elected officials, who should be the ones making these decisions? They were a little frustrated by the fact that no one mentioned to them why the question was being asked, it was merely just, which do you prefer? And they told me personally that if they had been told that Los Alameda's was interested in moving it back, they would have brought it before their boards or their commissions and said, this is what's being requested, is there a way that we can support this city and having this be in the location that it was? Troy's the best at reaching out and networking and making friends with people in other cities, and he has generated a lot of goodwill towards us. And I think that that could have gone a long way, along with the other council members. I know they're all involved in boards and commissions, they know people from our surrounding communities that are the elected officials, and I think that could have worked to our benefit, but we weren't given that option. The decision was made by staff as opposed to the elected, and now they're standing together hand in hand, and there is going to be no moving that location. So it leads us to the options that we have left. And one of the things that I think is really kind of ironic about this, is I know that there's some concerns about Safe and Sane, but for myself, I did them my entire life. I know, Troy, you've said you've done it with your family. Rich, you talked about the wild party, I don't know, that's the fireworks problem, that might have just been the party and the drinking, I don't know. But nevertheless, we've become too fragile, we're too politically correct, we're too fragile, we can't do fireworks because we might get hurt. I think that at this point, we need to step back and say, how do we make this work? We're not asking for the big show to go away, but we are saying what Troy said, and I've said that to the people who've called me, I don't see where the money's going to come from. We were at a deficit this year, we had to come up with new ideas to generate funds, which are not going to be liked by the people of this community, I'll just tell you right now. We didn't raise taxes, but there are some things that are coming that you're not going to be happy about. But as the people who sit up here, we've got to find a way to provide for you. And so we're doing the best job we can in the innovative ways that we think will work best for this community. So then we're left with, yes, we want to keep the show, we know we can't move it back to where we want to, so we've got to come up with a fundraising. And here's the irony, I've invited TNT fireworks to come, because this staff report was so one-sided that I felt like we needed to have someone come and give some real data that is updated and not from 2007, 2008. So if you would, come forward, please, and here's what I'm recommending, and the council can take this into consideration, we can go either with, I meet with the community members, and we try and come up with an idea with staff, you can kick it back to the commission, but I think that delays the whole process, and then we're at a loss. Dean also said, you know, we've already brought it to us directly, let's just deal with it and move on. If we do Safe and Sane, and I'm going to ask you some very specific questions about ability to raise revenue via the fundraising aspect of the Safe and Sane fireworks, if we're wanting to keep the large show for a percentage of this community that deserves to have this show remain, because they enjoy it, they go, and it's a great deal, staff's done a wonderful job, why don't we have Safe and Sane? We commit, we put together a nonprofit that raises funds to put that fund money towards the base and help make that show not only sustainable, but potentially, if we do well enough, raise enough funds to have it higher and grander so that everyone can enjoy it. So if you would step to the mic and state-
Madam Mayor, if I can, just for a moment, in terms of what you mentioned, the staff research that went into this, we, what staff did was take the direction from the city council and go out, and with no bias whatsoever, it was a fact gathering, we went out to the surrounding communities that are our partners, and we talked about, we started with the base, because it's located on the base, we wanted to know, what is the base's position if it was moved back to the previous location? The base, and it was reiterated today, as you mentioned today, in the meeting that we had with the communities and with the base, and with the mayor and city manager group, Garden Grove was there as well, Rossmore, Cypress was not able to make the meeting today, Seal Beach was there, and the base. And it was reiterated from the community members that were present, as was consistent with the, what staff found in the research, that safety was the primary concern. The base talked about not wanting to move it back to the previous location, there've been a number of buildings that have been built in the last two years that are now in the fallout zone. The fallout zone is close in proximity to the residents, and there was a concern with also traffic and congestion in the area in terms of moving, transporting, if it was, if the parking was on the tarmac, the traffic would have to be transported back to the other location. There was a proposal that you had brought up today to talk about a parking lot A to house the visitors, and the base today said that that wouldn't be big enough for the 20,000 to 25,000 that really are there at the show itself. Just also, one thing to mention in terms of handicap parking, there, well, the staff had, we had a concern, based on the history of those that have to be transported from the tarmac to the previous location, if you take the number of attendees and you take a percentage of attendees that are handicapped, there's a substantial number that need to be transported back, and that's not safe in terms of staff and the base and the existing traffic that exists in the immediate site if it was moved back. So I just want to, you know, I think Corey did an outstanding job researching this, and we had no bias whatsoever, it was mentioned in the past, it was- we had no bias whatsoever, it was mentioned in the past, it was, staff really made our best attempt to do a fact finding with the surrounding communities, and safety was the primary concern of everyone that we talked to in terms of the desire to keep it where it is.
Okay, well, what staff's direction was, Brett, if you remember, was to go out and find a way to bring it back, okay? And so, the fact that instead of them taking it as an item for the councils or the boards to discuss, they went strictly to the staff, and the staff has, you know, a vested interest in this. Some of them in the cities have to set up and take down, and the new location's much easier, much cleaner, quicker, that's stated in the staff report. As far as the fallout zone, as was stated earlier, if we go with higher fireworks, the people who are seated in that area on the runway are potentially going to be in the fallout zone there, too, so what do we do with that? If we're talking about the option and the answer is to do higher fireworks, if we can afford them, which we cannot. As far as traffic issues, there's always been traffic issues. I think that the staff report is very thorough, I think it's very thorough one way, and you and I tried to have this conversation earlier, and I don't know that we came to a resolution, but I did have representatives, elected officials, approach me afterwards and say, "I agree with what you said, this shouldn't have been handled with staff, it should have came before the councils or the boards." And that's where I have a problem. And I will say this, you know, one of the big concerns by the base was the field was not level, and that people have twisted their ankles in the past. And I get that, I get the base having concerns, because they could be liable, and they are doing us a great service by allowing us to have this event there. But I will tell you what, they have little Boy Scouts to go out and camp in that same field all the time. So that's why I think this is skewed, because when I spoke to Nathan Range over at the base, prior to the meeting with staff, he was very, very interested in what I had to say, and said that that changed his opinion considerably about where he was leaning. Then following the meeting with staff, I get, you know, we get this very thorough, anti-moving it to the original location, staff report. Now, that might be just my perception, but I have a right to that, because this is something that's near and dear to the people of this community. And so, I would just say to you, I think that, I'd like to have this gentleman tell us potentially what kind of revenue we might be able to generate. It's an affluent area, I think people would embrace the ability for at least potentially two years in a pilot program to have the Safe and Sane back, and we create a nonprofit where all the money from those fireworks sales go towards having the base show be better or sustained for the future. So if you would stand up, sir, and give me your name, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Kelly, Vice President with TNT Fireworks. We're the state's largest wholesale distributor of Safe and Sane, state-approved fireworks to nonprofit organizations who sell them as a fundraising activity. We're currently in 291 communities throughout the state of California. A lot of different questions here, a lot of notes. Here in Orange County, we currently have seven cities that allow the sale of state-approved fireworks. I believe the grand jury report and your staff indicates five, that's changed since the published of that. In addition to that, there are two cities that have concluded two-year pilot programs, City of Huntington Beach and the City of Villa Park, who currently have the issue before their voters two weeks from tomorrow.
Right.
So just to update you a little bit on that. You know, the original intent of, if you read that report thoroughly, if you look to the back, I think there are 14 points that the grand jury puts forward to the cities that currently allowed the sale at that time, bless you. And almost, I think, 10 or 11 of them were specific to nonprofit status, are they paying their sales tax, et cetera, et cetera. The last three points dealt with asking cities to, A, go out and develop alternate fundraising mechanisms, or B, reevaluate their program within their city to allow Safe and Sane fireworks with encouragement to get rid of it. All five mayors of those cities at that time responded to the grand jury report stating that they had no intention of banning Safe and Sane fireworks and continue to today. The question, I get asked this all the time, how much money will a nonprofit organization make? And I would require a little more study to look into that, there are a lot of factors that go into determining that. I can tell you that from a population standpoint, the city of Los Alamitos is very similar in size to the City of Villa Park. We currently have two locations that are there that generate in excess of $100,000 retail revenue, okay? So if that helps you a little bit. I can go back and poll other cities throughout California. Other factors that come into play, a number of neighboring cities that allow the sale of the product sometime will impact that, but clearly, I think, as you proceed with this, you want to be very cognizant of the fact that your intent here is, is to make money for a foundation, a high school booster program, whatever, that's the city's decision, okay? But you're going to have X amount of dollars sold in a specific community, and it really boils down to how you want to slice that pie up and how you want the revenues dictated. As I mentioned, we do business in 291 cities throughout California, and that number continues to grow. We've had over 30 cities reopen by council action or ballot since 1995, so we've only had one city in Northern California that banned fireworks. So, clearly, the industry has seen some growth with respect to that. I think attitudes are beginning to change somewhat, there are many people that are getting on to city councils now, who did grow up with fireworks, and do have all 10 accounted for, and who believe that, you know, they were able to do it, didn't understand why it went away, and want to be able to provide this for their children or their grandchildren in some cases, in terms of, there is a niche of individuals who don't want to jump in the car and go to an arena, or go to a specific site with 10, 20, 30,000 other people who have to pay for parking, who are crowded in with crowd control issues, who quite frankly just like to sit at home in their cul-de-sac or on their street and enjoy the 4th of July fireworks the way they did when they were little kids, have their own bathroom to access, and to get out and talk to their neighbors for a reason other than an emergency. And I think, you know, I heard a lot of the discussion earlier at your public opinion and comments, and a lot of those presented with respect to your aerial show are really true with what the Safe and Sane fireworks consumer is really looking for. So, we are available, we're based here in Orange County, we're here at Fullerton, is where my office is. I'm here this evening with Rich Legaspe, who's an area manager, who deals specifically with cities and nonprofit organizations. I oversee all the operations in Southern California, as well as the government relations, and we are here as a resource. We can take a lot of the legwork out of going out and looking around. I would strongly encourage you to contact Villa Park and/or Huntington Beach and talk to their staffs about some of the positive things and negative things that took place during their two-year trial periods. I assume that they were positive enough that they wanted to ask the voters the question, so I'm available for any other questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions while I have him up?
Sure, I think you'd mentioned seven cities, do you know them? I know like-
Costa Mesa, Santa Ana, Garden Grove, Buena Park, Stanton, Westminster, Fullerton.
Okay, so, Los Alamitos is part of the Orange County Fire Authority, as Councilmember Edgar said, and I get to sit on that board. So of the cities, it's really kind of interesting, Buena Park is a member of OCFA, Santa Ana is a member of OCFA, Stanton is a big proponent and a member of OCFA, Villa Park, trial period, OCFA, Mayor Barnett, I sit next to him in the board meetings, and the Westminster is also a member of OCFA. So, the other cities have their own fire departments, Garden Grove, Fullerton, and Costa Mesa. And then Huntington Beach's trial has ended this year, and then it's up for-
It started in 2012, and they ran it for two years.
Okay.
It concluded in 2013, so they did not allow it in 2014, they put it on the ballot for this November.
Okay, and then Villa Park said it was two years, and it's up for ballot measure right now?
Yeah, 2014 was the second year, and they said that we're going to do a two-year trial, and they made, the city council made a decision to put the issue to the voters.
Okay, but that is, it was implemented two years as a trial by the city council, not needing-
That is correct.
-the people, so that's something-
As was Huntington Beach.
Okay, thank you very much, no other questions, thanks.
Okay, just to dispel a couple of things that I think we're concerned with, I understand the, if you'd like to sit down here, welcome to, since there's no other questions, thank you for coming tonight. Orange County Fire Authority, I understand their concerns, but I did do some research, and in the timeframe when the fireworks show was back in the old location, there were no structure fires that were related to fireworks or the show. And growing up in a small community, I don't recall there being a great deal of fire structures, I can't say that there were none, but I don't think that it was a real problem, but I do understand their concerns. I will say, though, that just as they are concerned about Safe and Sane fireworks, they were also concerned about speed humps, which we put in our alleys. And I will tell you that it has been a huge benefit to this community, it has slowed down the traffic, it's pushed it back out onto Cotella, instead of people using our alleys to usurp the traffic, the children are safer, so I understand their thought process, it's a good thing for the community because it's safer, but it doesn't mean it's unsafe, as far as I'm concerned. They talked about in the staff report, law enforcement costs, it appeared in the smaller community that was like ours, it was about $5,000. I will say that we pay an extra about $5,000 roughly when we do wings, wheels, and rotors, when we do anything specific over at the base that's large, like the race on the base, there's always extra money that's expended for those events, so I see this to be very similar to that, and I don't know that it should be a problem. I was in Huntington Beach this last year, and because we don't have the ability to do Safe and Sane, where I live, you can't see the fireworks, so I went to my sister's house, which is what the people were talking about, is people are now leaving the community, instead of giving to know each other better and becoming friends and looking out for each other, they're leaving the community and going elsewhere. I will tell you, it was the best fireworks display ever, and it was done illegally. And that's what I don't want to see here, is that people become so frustrated that they start acting out on their own. And I will tell you, I've talked to other community members in other communities, and they say, they actually do the Safe and Sane, and the police officers just kind of turned a blind eye. Now, I'm not recommending that, but I'm just saying, I think that we need to come to a place where we listen to the community and we give them what they want. So, I would have to say, I'm in support of starting the process for Safe and Sane. I think that the council should look at putting it on a ballot to allow the people to vote on it, because I know up here, what we want is what the people want, we're just their voice. But in the interim, because there's not going to be a big change for this next year for the 4th of July, I think that I would like to ask the council to please consider what was said to you by some of the people who spoke tonight, but all of the other people who don't have the ability to come down here and tell us what they think, or don't feel that their voice is going to be heard and that we'll take any action. I wish they knew us better and know that we do take those, that input very seriously, and we take it to heart, and we try and represent you the best way we can. So, I would like to ask that, I heard a couple of things thrown around, the community group meet with myself and staff, I've heard that it could go back to the commission, but there are negatives to that, as far as it could take a little bit longer, and we're trying to do something for this next year, so we don't go three years with people having to leave the community. So, if we're opposed, maybe we start looking at the process of, at the very least, Safe and Sane for one year. I think we need to consider the possibility to use that to raise funds for the larger show, so that the city doesn't have to pay for it, or if we have that initial money, we can use it to go higher, so everyone can benefit from it. And here's the thing, for people who don't like Safe and Sane, or feel like they're going to be injured, that's the wonderful thing, if you don't want to do them, you don't have to, but it doesn't stop those of us who are interested in having that tradition that we grew up with, to celebrate our independence. And it seems kind of counterintuitive that we are saying to the people of this community, yeah, you can celebrate your 4th of July, but you can't celebrate it the way you want to. It's almost like it's counter to your independence. So, that would be my recommendation, is that if the council deems appropriate, myself and some community members can get together with staff to see if there are some other options. We look into Safe and Sane for a trial period of two years, just to get us through, use it as a fundraiser for the event, to start putting those cash stores aside, and then potentially use that money, like I said, to bolster, or if not, to sustain the current show that we have over at the Joint Forces Training Base. Dean?
Mayor, Mr. Kelly, when he spoke, mentioned that Villa Park generates $100,000 in gross sales, and I had an opportunity to reach out while we were debating this thing with a colleague that is on the council on Villa Park, and the response was that the school groups, booster clubs made money, football band, the city made nothing, in fact, we've had to increase law enforcement the night of July the 4th. No matter what ordinance you pass, expect additional traffic from neighboring cities, increased use of illegal fireworks, and an inability to enforce whatever ordinance you do pass. Your fire hazard's not as great as theirs. We've had issues, because I believe Safe and Sane fireworks are sold in Hawaiian Gardens, and are used in some of the LA County cities that are close by. I'm not sure the sale of Safe and Sane within the city limits is really so much the issue. You've talked about the ability for fundraising, and I kind of have to rely a little bit on the older figures from the grand jury report, that there's not a, there's not a big profit margin in that. Maybe Mr. Kelly knows differently, but he said he'd have to research it, the figures that we saw from the grand jury report don't reflect that. I think we're going to be faced with what we've talked about before, and that's an ability to create some type of sustaining fundraising, because it's not just a one year at 65,000, it's going to be that way forever. And I don't know sponsorship-wise, you know, what commitments we have that are ongoing, other than that some years some do and some don't. I know one year, they attempted to have community groups come in and sell food, that I think conflicted a little bit. That was when it was at the old site, as I recall. I know that Mr. Beez over there came in to try and sell hot dogs, and wound up not making anything, and said he wouldn't come back because it wasn't beneficial. I just think there's, there's got to be a solution that using the community to get together and help us try and find that solution, and partnering, they still are going to get a fireworks show. How we can enhance it to better the quality of life in their neighborhoods is the real issue. And I agree with your comment in terms of, maybe we're down to two items rather than the three that Mayor Patton Murphy had. I don't believe Safe and Sane is the answer, I know you support that, but I, I'm worried more of the injury that does occur, the fireworks today are a little bit different, and it is the illegal fireworks that are the ones, for the most part, that are injuring people. It's the bottle rockets that get shipped off, and those are not Safe and Sane. The bottle rockets that come in and get mixed in with the Safe and Sane, they get fired up and land on somebody's house, and a fire occurs, and that happens every year. Are we, are we looking in the wrong direction by considering that, as opposed to simply trying to figure out what we do to fundraise? And I think Parks and Recreation has done an admirable job with Race on the Base in terms of their abilities to generate funds by bringing in partners and doing things a little bit differently and out of the box. And as I said, I think giving it to the commission, maybe just kicking it down the road a little bit, but I would really like to see us somehow engage with the community of those that are involved, the ones that have come tonight with the passion and the concern, and see what can we do. I would have a tough time supporting a trial balloon, if you will, with Safe and Sane. I think Mr. Kelly is probably just as biased from a revenue generating standpoint as you believe staff may have been in terms of trying to point this one direction or another. I don't think that acc- I don't think that occurred, although I understand your feelings and your concern, because I've experienced, as we've talked, experienced similar things. The leadership of the base seems to change every two years, and every two years, it's a different re-engagement type of a thing. They're happy to do the program. I mentioned when this first came up, that the one element would be if the base suddenly decided they didn't want to do it anymore. Now, everybody's going to suffer, because there's really no other venue in the area. So, I think working with them, trying to figure out what the best way to do it is. I know early wings, wheels, and rotors, they didn't want charge for parking, they didn't want to charge for admission, or anything else like that. So, the fact that we can charge $5 a car coming in, at least that's one part of the element. But I would encourage you to try and figure a way to engage the community in what they feel they can do on a sustaining, long-term type of a deal. Otherwise, we're going to be year for year on this each way going through. And I think the city needs to make a commitment that, you know, we're willing to budget and set aside a certain amount of money to help fund that, but it's going to be sponsorships and fundraising to take care of the balance of it.
Right. Warren?
Yeah, Mr. Kelly, you might step up to the microphone. I do have a few questions. I really appreciate you being here. So, Villa Park is roughly half the size of our city from a population standpoint, and they had two booths. Is that kind of your recollection?
No, that's a fact.
They had two locations? Two locations. So theoretically, we could have four, double size, and then...
I'm sorry, a lot of communities will tie it to a population.
I understand. So, the $100,000 in retail sales? And so typically, in nonprofits, there's a, you know, a target of every dollar that they bring in sales, they want so much in terms of money actually in their revenue. What is that ratio for this business?
Varies from stand to stand, but probably an average between 30% and 35%.
So, 35 cents on a dollar roughly in that?
Yeah. Our program is all in consignment. In other words, we enter into an agreement with the XYZ school, church. Okay? We secure a location. Now, the church may choose to run on their own location, at which point, there would be no consideration for that. They own the property, and they want to put a fireworks stand on it. The church may say, we're in the middle of a neighborhood, we don't get high traffic, like the Walmart, like the Ralphs, like the Stater Brothers. We have relationships with those chains, and we can put a nonprofit organization on that parking lot. We would share the consideration for the rental, because the big companies want consideration for use of their parking lot.
Right. And the real advantage for the nonprofits, the 501(c)(3)'s, is that their labor is, I would imagine, by and large, free, right?
It's volunteers.
So, they're not paying a labor component. It's really that for every dollar they bring in, they're going to net about 30 to 35 cents per dollar.
Yes.
And that's so, with $100,000 in sale, one might land $35,000 or more, depending on how it goes. Okay, that was the question I have. Thank you.
Richard?
I'm going to hold back for now.
You're going to hold back now. Troy?
I have nothing.
Back to you.
Back to me. Well, I can't support the Safe and Sane either, without a thorough investigation. And the very fact that we're being asked to look at it based on virtually nothing, except that one biased witness from the audience, to me, is wrong. This is going to be a very important issue to the people of Los Alamos, and this should get its own hearing. We were brought here tonight under Fourth of July options, mostly talking hire, moving them. There's really been, up till today, there's been no Safe and Sane discussion. I think it needs to go, as I said, to the police department, get their opinion, fire. That's why we have a parks commission. And give the other citizens, make them aware we've been considering this, and bring this back. I'm not saying I would vote for it or against it, but it deserves a hearing, and it deserves a hearing standing on its own. It's a simple question, you know, you want Safe and Sane or not, without tying it into the other things. I don't see the need for the two-year period of fundraising. We can raise $12,000. To say we need to raise funds to get this done, if one-sixth of the community feels it's worthwhile, maybe that's a good use of our reserve. I'm not one for spending the reserve, but if two to 3,000 people in a community of 12,000 feel that $12,000 is a good use of their money, then maybe the city can commit to the, oh, lost my place, to the $12,000 that it would take to shoot them higher, so that this year, everybody can enjoy the show. I really think for, you know, actually, let me take that back. For 2015, we actually have time to analyze Safe and Sane. We don't have to commit till July, correct?
Isn't it May or March or something?
I believe...
I'm sorry, April.
I think it's April that we need to make the decision.
Okay, so, we have five or six months to analyze this and commit one way or the other. And that's why I think it should be done. As I said, I really, you know, I'd like to go with the will of the people, but let's find out what the will of the people is, if it is Safe and Sane. I think that, you know, you could do a simple poll of the people, it's called monkey something.
Monkey survey.
Sure, thank you. That will poll the people for us, basically for free, correct?
Yeah, Survey Monkey is a...
Survey Monkey, okay. And I know my sister's company uses it all the time to poll people, and it's free service. You know, if we put this out there that we're considering this, maybe the rest of the community shows up. Maybe they're all in agreement, and if they are, great. You know, then that's the way we go. But it needs to be fleshed out a little more, in my mind.
I've got a question. Your husband was talking about the smoke, and, you know, again, I haven't sat in Carrier Row to watch. So, if we raise the money, what, and we're trying to just get it higher, and that doesn't solve it, and the location doesn't work, you know, I mean, I guess the Safe and Sane thing starts to become more of a prevalent solution. And like I said, I probably am focused on the financials, and, you know, let's face it, we can, you know, nip and tuck for 12 grand for a short-term compromise to help a part of the community to try and make it higher, and test whether that works, before we end up spending 50 grand when we, like I just outlined, two years from now, if we can't raise the money, or it doesn't meet the requirements. I guess, you know, to look at both sides, I mean, I would be supportive to try and nip tuck, to see, let's try if even higher even works. I mean, 4,000, that's almost a mile away from where it was. So, great, so now we're going to make it higher. And let's think about this, Corey, I'd hate to have his job. Hey, everybody, stay with us. You know, I know everybody wants to have this Fourth of July, but we're about ready to potentially go bigger. Who's in? Are we all in together? What if they start saying, yeah, that's a great idea, they start stepping it up? And how are we going to control this from getting, you said, hey, Troy, are we trying outside of here, are we trying to grow this event, and are we trying to celebrate locally?
Right.
And then it gets out of control, and then it becomes an event we really can't afford to sustain. I also, I've been, I'm on a bunch of nonprofit boards. Doesn't it sound good for the Safe and Sane thing to get an extra 20, $30,000 for a year or two? But I'll tell you what, that's a sugar high. You know, you can't sustain that. If you took that away after two years, then you're going to have every nonprofit in here saying, don't do that, we're too dependent on the money. And they aren't the citizens.
Right.
A big part of them. So, I'm really twisted with this, and I would say, if I was going to default anyway, I'm trying to go with what Dean said, and you, Jerry, of, you know, hey, let's not kick it down, let's see if we can be proactive and not entrench. But I am leaning towards where Rich is at, to have it further evaluated. But if we wanted to try and reach some sort of conclusion, nip, tuck for a year, try if higher is better, you know, if the line of sight, as it was laid out, was still bad, it's bad. It's not going to change.
I agree, and I don't mean to overlap of what you're saying. I think that the residents were trying to be a good partner and say, hey, either higher, so maybe we can see it. But I've spoken to a number of them. And again, it's not just Carrier Row. I've talked to Apartment Row, I've talked to some people in suburbia, I've talked to people in New Dutch. I haven't gotten to Old Dutch, because you have to be very careful. You can't be too proactive up here, because then you conflict yourself out. And I wanted to be able to contribute to this conversation. So, I guess for me, I don't want us to be caught with our pants down. If we do the higher, and they're still not visible, then everybody's gone another year, and you're another year away from those community traditions. And maybe that's not worth as much to some people, but for me, that's what makes me love this community, is my connection to the people who live here. So, to me, I think that we should definitely start looking into the process of allowing Safe and Sane. It's not committing, it's just saying, we're going to start the process. I'm not sure exactly, Rich, what kind of investigation we would do. I think it's just something, you do it, and if it works, great, and if it doesn't, then you pull it. That's why the two-year program. Go ahead, Troy.
But Jerry, I mean, in God we trust, right? We did the Survey Monkey on that, 2007.
No, I walked door to door.
But you did, and there's no doubt about that, but we actually also surveyed, put the survey on the city website, and got a poll that 91% of the people supported doing that. JM, I know you weren't one of them, but different story.
No, but he did appreciate the fact that we did the work.
That we did that.
And so, what I'm saying is, let's do the work, let's give them the opportunity to weigh in. But I don't know that you can do an investigation. I mean, I believe the police probably has a very pat answer from their experience in the past. I'm sure the fire authority does, too. I'm sure the people have a different one. And I just think that starting the process doesn't commit us, it just says, we're looking into this. And with regards to nonprofits, I'll tell you, I've been involved in nonprofits for two decades now, and I have watched over the year, years pass, how the economy has severely impacted those nonprofits and their ability to raise funds. An example, we just made legal remote caller bingo, to help the community here have another option to be able to raise funds, okay? So, Safe and Sane, remote caller bingo, a lot of people don't like bingo. They don't want people who are gambling coming into their community. The remote caller bingo brings more people from outside the community. I mean, people could have looked at that negatively. We didn't. We stepped forward, and we took a proactive approach to it. I see the Safe and Sane as the same thing. It's one day a year, it's not a prolonged, year-long thing. And I think that this is just another way, for if we don't choose to take the money and put it towards the fireworks show, then it's another way for us to be able to designate nonprofits that can benefit from it, you know? And they know it's a two-year program, so if it goes away in two years, then they can come and lobby the city council and say, hey, we changed our mind, we really want to support this, it's been a good benefit for our nonprofit. Our nonprofits are doing great things for this community, and we have some really phenomenal ones here, that take care of people in need, and for me, that's the best kind of nonprofit you can have. So, to me, I don't see the, I don't see any threat in researching going with Safe and Sane. I'm not saying we have a special election, that's not what I'm saying, because I know that costs, what, $30,000 to $50,000? That's not what I'm pushing for. But I want those people to feel like we're listening, and that was really what they said at the first meeting, if you can't do the new location, because they don't believe for one second the higher ones are going to be able to be visible, or much more visible, and we're not going to be able to afford to do that many. And I will tell you that when I first talked to staff, it was a dollar amount of about $22,000. How we got down to 12,000, I don't know. But what I'm saying is, this is not necessarily the answer, like you said, Troy, and I agree with you. So, I think that for us to look into Safe and Sane, and potentially, I won't be here on the council, I'll be gone in December, you guys can address whether or not you want to do a two-year pilot program. But I think that you get into a really slippery slope when you start taking chunks of the reserve, because, Rich, before you came, we weren't aware of it, but we were spending about $400,000 to $600,000 of the reserve.
A year.
A year. And we weren't really realizing that. So, I think things like this are how that starts, and it could snowball into something, because we won't always all be here, and that institutional knowledge won't always be here. So, while I get what Rich is saying, that money's there to benefit the community, and I appreciate that. I don't know if that's the answer. And in a year or so, when the 15,000 goes away, what do we do then?
So, Jerry, can I ask, maybe the city attorney? You know, the, this is an item that isn't necessarily required to go back to the people, Safe and Sane. I mean, the city council has the jurisdiction to declare tonight forever that we could have Safe and Sane, if we really wanted to. And I'll be honest with you, from the TNT guys, is that I looked at Huntington Beach, and, you know, their pilot program, and the other city, I think it was Westminster, you know, for, they did a two-year floater, and then they still didn't have the courage to go and just make it final, so they took it back to the people. You know, and I don't know, I think something that I really like about our council, and like what Jerry said, I don't want the people to feel like that we're listening to, we are listening. So, if we're going to do something, let's be deliberate about it and do it. And so, if you do that, though, you know, maybe the data point, I mean, Rich said something, hey, look, if we do an evaluation, and the citizens want this, then it's bigger than just the communities bordering the base, then we'll have much more conviction to really do it, not to trial balloon it, and then have no courage and put it out to the ballot of the people, we'll do it ourselves. And so, I'm just, I like data. I would like to be able to just get a little bit more thorough. And I'm not talking, look, we got some time to get this, we got between now and April, if we want to be a team player. You know the survey question that I'm interested in? How many people in the city actually go to the Fourth of July event?
Right.
I mean, maybe that event has outgrown its purpose. Because, you know, I know in my part of the community, it takes a little bit of effort to go to the base. There's not, I mean, I actually like the College Park North parade thing that happens, but then I kind of go home, and, you know, at that point, I wait for the event over in the base, and I don't really see a ton of my neighbors over there. And I don't see a lot of the community people, other than the people that are in the VIP section that paid for it, us. So, you know, there is a question, is, you know, does the city value that event, and do they continue to want to be a part of that partnership? I think that's an important question, because, you know, if they don't, then that money frees up towards maybe more law enforcement help with fire, and we do what the community potentially wants, and, but we need much more information. I really do believe...
No, no, and I support that. I'm just saying, start the process of doing the research that you're talking about. Dedicate whatever monies it would take, or you've got this free service. But I will tell you, I watched people in the audience when they said, the city was surveyed back when we decided not to do it, and I saw people shaking their head, no. And we all know up here, it's very difficult to get to everyone in the city. And so, we many times get something that's just skewed a certain way. Not this, I'm just joking. But I think that we need to find a honest, honest isn't the right word, a true way of getting that information from everybody in the community, so everybody has a chance to weigh in. Because if the majority says no, I'm not looking to force it down anybody's throat. I'm just saying, the people who are coming to me, who are disappointed, are saying, give us back our Safe and Sane. This was the trade, though the staff report from before may say, that's not the case, it is the case. And I talked to John Underwood tonight, who's one of our major historians, and he said, absolutely, it was a deal that was made, give up the Safe and Sane, and we'll give you the fireworks show. Now, at the meeting today at the base, they talked about, you know, our hope is to grow this, and grow this, and grow this into a regional thing. And I said, but, wait a minute, that's not what my impression was, nor is it the impression of the residents. We believed it was for our little communities, Cypress, Seal Beach, Rossmore, and LaSalle, to enjoy. So, if your intent is to grow this and bring more people onto the base, then we really need to understand that, so we can convey that to all of you. And I agree with Troy. I've seen a handful of people that I know, and I don't know everybody in the community, but there's a handful of people that I see on the times that I've been. So, I think that's really, I guess, maybe the survey would have something to do with, do you support Safe and Sane? Do you attend?
Yeah. And maybe give the commission an opportunity to flesh it a little bit?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
And with you and your community group...
I'm just saying, we can hand them, you know, hand them this work product that we've spent, because we've spent an awful lot of time on it tonight. Sure, Dean?
I was just going to say, Troy pointed out a good thought here that struck me. It's not Los Alamos. How many of the people that actually go there are from Los Alamos?
Right.
Because we partner with Cypress, we partner with Rossmore, we partner with Seal Beach, and I like to believe we're one big community, I'm not worried about borders.
Right.
But I mean, if we just survey just the 11,500 residents in Los Alamos, we're not getting a true picture either, because of the neighboring communities that are contributing toward it, so that their citizens can have a benefit, so...
Well, what, I think, Dean, what we're saying is, if our community's not engaged in it, maybe it's not a good... in it, maybe it's not a good investment of our money. If they wanna continue with it, that would be their option at that time if the city council then decides not to do that.
And I have some real differences. If the base is saying, "We wanna grow this," you know, into 100,000 people, this is not the Rose Bowl, and it's a free show. If they wanna bite the bullet and start throwing some money into it, okay, but I don't see them rolling in money over there either, so.
Well, that was just a big red flag for me when they said, you know, "Our intent is to grow it, you know, it's one of the ways that we get people onto the base and that they become familiar with the base." And so, that was like, whoa, wait a minute, that's not what I believe the intent is, or that's what the people believe the intent is. So, I guess, so we can have a community group, if everybody's in support of that, and I can start trying to meet with those people, as soon as they're interested, please call me, you can call me at the city, or my cell number is...
Jerry, I mean, why don't we kick it off right? I mean, the press can help us, or at least a press release, kicking off the community event led up by the mayor. We agendize it or have it directed to be agendized to the Parks and Rec. Because the thing, I will share with you a sense of urgency, I want a timeline as soon as possible on what is our path to a decision?
Right.
How long are we gonna take? How long do we get to get the survey questions? When are we gonna post it? What is our PR strategy?
Well, and that's funny that you said that, because that's exactly what I asked the base today. I said, "Well, you're saying that potentially you may be able to move it, but logistically it's not good for this reason and that reason." And I said, "Well, I'm only here till December, so since this is of importance to me, can we get this decision made very quickly?" And I will tell you, much like the staff report says, I don't think that's going to be an option. So, for me, instead of wasting time trying to work through that process, I'd rather we take these steps, the community group, agendize for the Parks and Rec, I think that's a great idea. Anyone else? Obviously, we could start working on a survey and the questions that...
And maybe get those agendized, or a special meeting between now and the next meeting.
Right.
And try and get into the Parks and Rec Commission between now and then so that we can get their opinion and perspective.
And I think, I think that really, reaching out to the community, whether it be through a survey or whatever, is the best way, because I think that's where you get the most true feedback. So, we can talk about the survey, and that can be done on a special meeting. So, anything else that you would like to see?
If we were to post the survey, could we get Cypress and Seal Beach and Rossmore to post, potentially post it on their site, on their websites, and just anybody could, you know, by zip code or whatever could respond to that?
But Dean, let me ask you, I mean, I'm sensing this problem as a LaSalle problem. I mean, it's a regional event that may have fallen out of vogue. I guess if there's a way to cordon off people to have to pick where they're from coming in, possible, I mean, the extreme of that is the anti-rich idea, which is a paid, you know, poll out there, you know, to have a company come in and evaluate, you know, an actual structure with, you know, statistically significant evaluation. I mean, that's 15 grand, and I don't think we're going...
And we didn't do that when we did the "in God We Trust" thing, but I mean, you know, we're carrying the, carrying the event, basically, in partnership really with Cypress. So, I think if the decision is, "We're not gonna continue to contribute toward it," then I think those other stakeholders in the thing need to be, need to be engaged, too.
Well, Cypress, just a year or so ago, was angry at us and was telling us that they were gonna pull their money out. So, I'm not really so concerned with the other cities, I'm worried about our constituents and the people that elected us. But it's up to the council. If you guys wanna see an overall survey, then that's up to all of you.
But, you know, messaging is really important, and I'll go back to Cory's job. He's gotta go every couple weeks and deal with all these people, and they gotta talk about the other six events and things that we do. You know, if the word is, you know, "We're in the process of killing off a Fourth of July contribution," they need to start making preparations. But I think we should be messaging this, that we are just really doing an evaluation. And I think if I was in the other cities trying to be a good neighbor, I would just wanna know what our timeline is so that we can maneuver around it. And I wouldn't predispose anything at this point and send a message, 'cause I'm very appreciative of Cypress helping carry the weight, too, and, you know, but I also don't want Cory to get kinda caught, you know, with the problem before he's really got full support of the council behind him.
I think we need to be clear that we're not trying to kill it off. If that came across, that's the wrong thing. I just, there's a number of stakeholders that are involved, and I just wanted to give all stakeholders, you know, an opportunity, we shouldn't limit it.
Okay, so, Rich?
Yeah, well, I wanna make clear that my, what I'm saying about the $12,000 is one time. One year we look at it, and, you know, we'll know right away if shooting them higher works or not. In fact, we could probably take 10 shells out there on a Tuesday night and know the answer rather quickly. But if we decide that this is gonna be an ongoing thing, then it has to become part of a budget, where something else will have to go, and we're a break-even city. So, I just wanna make clear, it's a one-time thing. I also wanna clarify, there's been some discussion about nonprofits making money. I don't know how we morphed into that.
It's just one of the options.
Well, when they, I mean, you can help verify this, but in Garden Grove, there's a tremendous amount of money made, and the city is not making the money, the nonprofits support it, so they are the ones that make the money.
But that's not the point here. We're making a nonprofit to raise money to make up for the difference. The nonprofits aren't gonna, aren't gonna get anything out of it the way it was originally proposed.
Well, I agree with you, it was an option, though, but I think that is a different structure. That means the city takes a nonprofit status, and how do we staff that to raise money?
So, we have a group of people who are already saying they're willing to take the lead on that. You said you thanked Tom for doing that.
Yes.
I'm just saying that they understand that the intent of their nonprofit and the intent of their volunteer time is to give it back to the city to be able to use for that event.
That's my point.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm just saying that's an option. If we can't offset it, at least we have that option to look into. And just like was said earlier, just like Mr. Brandeberry was able to give money to the city, so can this nonprofit. And they understand that their intent is to raise money for that. That's their mission statement in their, in their bylaws.
I just wanted to make that clear, that there's, it's not benefiting something else. I mean, this is a plenty good cause, and we have heard from enough citizens that if it works to shoot them higher, then we decide, well, hell, we decide, well, heck. It's, it's, it's worth it, $12,000 for, you know, to benefit three or $4,000 citizens. I have no trouble with that.
Right.
That's why I wanna make sure, you know, it's understood it's a one-time out of, you know, and we're gonna make some minor adjustments at the, at the mid-city anyway, and I'm sure Glenn's gonna come up with glorious numbers that our income is up 3%, and sales tax are up 4%, so, but we can, we can find that. So, I don't, I think we're pretty much in agreement. You know, everybody, everybody's willing to look at, at the Safe and Sane, just on, just not tonight.
Right.
But on a slower basis, but with an idea that maybe could get done for this year.
Yeah, it was just an option.
We have plenty of time. And at the same time, we can investigate, you know, the fireworks, shooting them higher.
Yeah, I mean, those were both options. I'm not sure where there was a perception that there was something specific looking to be driven tonight. I just would like us to be proactive and start taking steps to find out if that's a good fit for the community. That's all.
And Cory, you know, I was kinda joking, but we could really take whatever ad hoc committee or something takes us over, we could take them out there and ask the fireworks companies to shoot off a couple hundred dollars' worth of shells, and I think we'd know. You know, we'd know right away if you could stand, you know, on Howard Street and see them. It's very simple.
Well, and too, just food for thought, when I talked to Cory about this item early on, there's a lot of, when we were trying to figure out how to maybe do this, you know, there was the $9,000 from the parking. If we bumped the parking up to 10, that was 18, 'cause we were trying to get to that number about 22, 24. And I said, you know, "You have the ground barrage, which is a benefit to the people who are at the actual location, but if we were to remove some of those and put that money towards the higher ones where everyone can benefit..." Because I will tell you, just in case you guys didn't know, Rossmore can't see them at all, that's what I was told today. Cypress, I was at my nieces in Cypress the year before, the first time it happened, you can barely see it. You can barely see it at all. And Seal Beach, I spoke to their representative of the neighborhood that's closest to the base, and he said, "We can see it equally as good, either from the new or the old location." So, I think it's great for your neighborhood, 'cause they're finally getting an opportunity to see, no, I think that's wonderful, because everyone should benefit from this. So, just to move this item along, okay, so we're talking about myself with the community group to get some real ideas of what they would like to see happen. Agendize it for the Parks and Rec to see what they think can be done. Start with a survey. Do we have any concerns about the Service Monkey?
Survey Monkey.
Survey Monkey, I'm sorry, my eyes are blurry right now. The Survey Monkey, is that a system that you feel comfortable that you can't, like, kinda stack the ballot?
I would just say an online survey, I mean, there's a couple other tools, but staff, staff will figure that out.
We've used them before for several other things. The most difficult thing is getting emails, 'cause that's how it goes out, is via email. You can put a link on the website, and you can ask people to require them to put their addresses in for verification purposes and that sort of thing. Obviously, direct email is the best way, 'cause then people get it otherwise. The press releases and other information of getting the word out to the community to come to the website, to click on it, to fill it out, and that sort of thing is also feasible.
Right, okay, great.
Don't we have emergency emails, at least a portion of the city? We have emergency notification?
They don't really like us to use that.
It could be businesses, too.
Are you referring to the Alert OC system? Where we make the phone calls and...
LAW.
That's only, the contract that we have with Alert OC is only for emergency use, we can't use it for community announcements.
I asked that, too, 'cause I thought it's a great way to get the information out.
We do have some emails from those that have taken recreation classes through our department, and we can pull those, that we can sort them by zip code and whatnot. We just, by zip code, obviously, would include Rossmore, so that goes back to them in putting where they live specifically, cross-referencing, making sure that that's verifiable information, and going from there.
Just an idea.
Great. Okay, so we've got those four items. I think Parks and Rec, when they look at it, may come up with some additional items. Brett, you had some?
I just wondered, on the questions for the survey itself, do you want the Rec and Park Commission to weigh in on the questions, or you wanna direct questions over to them?
I'd like to do, get the questions from the community group, and then they can look them over, but, I mean, I think the ones who are affected by it who have come forward, and I'm saying, I'll reach out to even more people that just sent me emails or made phone calls, and you all should let your people that you know in the community, 'cause we want everybody to weigh in on it. I don't want it to be just, say, you know, the people who have come forward tonight and said, "This is what we want." So, and other than that, so we can go ahead and start with the press release for the community group, agendize it for the Parks and Rec, we can start working on some survey questions via the community group, but also Parks and Rec. I mean, maybe we'll overlap and we'll find that the questions are all the same. Do we have anything else?
Yeah, you know, the Parks and Rec Commission, if you read the reports, is gonna tell us we already told you what we thought. So, I think it's important to say thank you for that, and we really are specifically asking for the refinement of the survey questions and their help in getting to the community. So, it's not like we're ignoring them and telling them to do it one more time, it's like we wanna advance the thought and see how more effectively we communicate with more people as fast as possible.
They didn't, they didn't mention Safe and Sane in their report. They haven't addressed that issue.
I thought that they gave a recommendation back.
It's right here on page four of six.
I, do you remember?
They did not discuss Safe and Sane. They, we specifically brought a report wrapping up the event as a whole, and then the commission came back with the recommendation that's in the staff report. But staff only brought, like we do with most, with all of our events, is we bring back just a recap of the event, ask for their input to make the event better for the next year.
Great. Okay, so, that's the beginning of it, how's that? And do we need to take any action to take?
Cory, do you think, anything else you think of in terms of the communication with the Park and Rec Commission and the timing?
No, I've, we've got a commission meeting in two weeks, so I guess my question is, is, do we wanna wait for the community group to come back with the questions and that information to take back to them, which would then be in December? Or do you want me to take it simultaneously, try and agendize it for the November meeting to have them create their own questions about this community survey? I mean, the staff can take the, I think I only have two questions of, "Do you attend the..."
Event.
The event, sorry, I'm trying to look through all my notes here. Do you attend the event? Do you, you know, support the event? And do you, your thoughts on Safe and Sane? Do you support Safe and Sane fireworks in the community? So, I can take those questions back to them as recommendations and have them come up with questions that they'd like to ask the residents, and then we can, I can either bring that back to the council or bring it back again to the commission in December with a combination of their questions and the community group's questions. That's all, I'm just looking for, we got a short time, I gotta get staff reports out to them next week.
Right, right. Well, maybe what we can do is, we can start the community group and add to these questions, but I will say, for a survey, I don't think you wanna have 20 questions, I wanna think you have like five questions. So, I think if we do it simultaneously, like Troy said, we could potentially have a special meeting in between now and the November, or November and December, in order to accommodate all this. I just think this is a good starting point, and that's all that was ever intended, you know.
May I suggest, just for continuity, if we've decided to move on to greater things, could we have an additional member of the council who's going to still be here, join you, so it doesn't come to December, you say thank you for all the plaques, and then we start over?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, well, staff's gonna be a part of it, so I would think that they would be able to report out. And maybe what we could do is, Cory, if you have the meeting in two weeks, staff can report out to us the questions that Parks and Rec came up with via the weekly, which is the quickest way we get information, and then we can go from there, cross-reference it with the community group to see if the questions are the same. And if council has input, I mean, absolutely, you know, it's all welcome, we're just trying to hone it down to like four or five questions that we could send out in a survey.
Well, it's more the Safe and Sane, that, you know, that issue is not gonna be resolved by the time you're gone. So, I think we should put somebody else with you to be able to carry that on.
I'm not opposed to it, I was just saying, staff would be here, you know.
Are you talking about an additional council member, like an ad hoc?
Yeah, make an ad hoc committee, but for lack of a better word, but just so there's some continuity.
Maybe mayor and another council member, 'cause that way, then the mayor could continue on when there's a new mayor, if there's a mayor and another council member, just to have...
So, he's saying you'd take over when I'm gone?
It didn't have to be me, but I'd be happy to.
Yeah, he's just saying, it would, that would be the mayor and an additional council member, so you'd slide into it in December, and the grief would be yours.
I wasn't looking for something.
So...
Check that one off, Rich. So, what about the press release?
The nominations?
No. The press release. You know, the important part of a survey statistically is that the context is set, and there's really two categories. You know, and to kinda wake the community up, the big category is, you know, "We're considering our continued participation in the ongoing Fourth of July. Did you attend? Are you interested?" It's really important to get the community's attention. You know, the report out to the community through the press on tonight's meeting should be, you know, "City council is trying to determine whether this community event still fits, and whether it's being well-attended by the city." So, when they see that, they'll say, "Well, it looks like the city's gonna do a low-budget type of survey." The second thing is, you know, "We're looking for options." The second thing is, you know, we're looking for options and one of the options that was really kicked around by the city council, either for trying to raise money to make the fireworks higher or a better event to get more people in the community there, is Safe and Sane fireworks and what do you think? And so, it's two questions with two easy prompts and the press release should be very similar communication-wise to get the attention. I think staff needs to sit back and think a little bit through this and I think the last item on the potential action item you're talking about, mayor, is we do need to kick it off to the public with the right frame of reference. So, that'd be my only addition to that.
Okay, so we've got that, Brett, then, the things that we're looking to do. Do we need to take a vote on that? I mean, I know that there were many options that were allowed with this broad agenda, which I thank Wendy for and Brett for making sure that it gave us all the options.
I think, I mean, we have the direction from the council. I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, do we need any...
If there's no objection, if there's no objection, you can let that be the order.
Any objection? Okay, great. So, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. Back from recess and we're going to move on to, let me get my, the consent calendar, and there were several items polled. Dean, you polled item E, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw that.
You're going to withdraw. And Rich, you had a question, you had it answered with regards to the same one. Troy, you polled B, D, and F.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, these will be fast. B and D will be fast. I think F will take a little bit of time. And B and D, I don't really need a staff report, but F I do.
Just comments, okay. All right, so what we'll do is, do we have a motion for the moving of the remainder?
I'll move the balance.
Second.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's roll call.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Dean, the parliamentarian. So, we're going to do a roll call. Wendy?
Councilmember Edgar.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Pusamato.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Graham Mahia.
Aye. And just for future reference, on the consent calendar, it does say for the warrants, it's a roll call, but it does not say it's a roll call for the...
Well, you're right.
So, no, but thank you. I mean, I'm always looking for ways to improve my running of the meeting. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start with item B. Councilmember Edgar, you brought that. Is this one that you'd like a staff report on?
No.
No, staff report, okay, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
So, item B is the MOU for our, one of our unions within the city and, you know, we just had our employee appreciation not too long ago and had an opportunity to talk to some of the employees and I think, you know, it's really important, this labor agreement is one of, two of the union agreements that we have, police and this, and this actually solidifies a four-year labor contract and it, you know, we hope that, you know, the message that we hear back from our staff, both the city attorney and negotiator and our city manager is that it was well-received. I think it's great to have stability in labor. I wanted to, you know, and I think all the council thinks, all the city staff for all the work that they do and, you know, and I think it's just really important to poll this and to say that because this took a long time to finalize, like nine months. And, you know, sometimes in that process of negotiation, you send mixed messages back and forth to the employees and I think that the one that we want to send at the end was thank you. And so, with that, I'll go ahead and move it.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to item D, approval of the strategic plan consultant request for proposal. Troy?
Yeah, ma'am, no, just really quick. This item is to approve the city manager to go out to hire a strategic planning consultant to take us through a process, very similar to what we went through in 2007, and that didn't go super well.
Right.
Especially for you, Dean, if I remember right. And so, I don't remember, I guess the question I had, and I probably could have asked you before, but I think it's important to the community because it's money we would spend to do kind of a goal-setting session and to make sure that our priorities are lined up. And what we had done before, when we hired you, is we made a commitment to you that we would do an evaluation and we set some pretty important goals there. And so, the little bit of the disconnect for me is, before we would start something like this, I would really like to do a city manager evaluation before we approved this because I thought we were going the right direction. We'd had some of the toughest things, we had to deal with this last year, you know, and on a tactical level, one of the most important hires is the Glenn Steinberg replacement on the finance and admin services. You know, we've had some turnover and so, a lot of those goals that we had, I'm not sure if we can come up with a lot of better stuff at this point for the next two or three years. We're still trying to dig our way tactically through. We also have the city hall, big picture thing going, so when we're talking about three, five, and seven years out, it seems like we've got our strategic footprint laid out and, you know, even if we had, you know, Tony Robbins come in and take us through walking on fire, I'm not sure what else we would come up with at this point. So, I would just ask either to continue this item, it's a great idea respectfully, wait until we, maybe we should do the next step as an evaluation of the city manager to see if he's meeting the expectations that we had set previously before we start something new. I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, so I just respectfully request to continue, my action or my motion requests is to continue this and/or bring it back and to maybe agendize for closed session, the next meeting, the city manager evaluation to meet our commitment to the city manager that we made back in November of last year.
Okay, I second that motion. Discussion, Richard?
I just have a question, Troy. This is an approval for a request for proposal. Do you mind if we go ahead with that? So, we, if we get through with the city manager, we're then in place to do this? We're only asking for proposals at this point. Would you, do you mind if we just go ahead and do this? It would have to come back to us, as I understand it, to then get it approved.
I was going to the end of getting a proposal and paying for it.
Yeah, I agree. You see, I have Y next to mine too, but...
Okay. Would you agree then that we need to get the city manager?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
So, anyone else? Dean?
I'd just say, the question I had raised was on the fiscal impact. We don't know how much this is going to be and apparently, we really don't have any money to do it. We have money to do, we have money, depending upon what the cost is, in a budgeted area of non-departmental contractual services, but we don't know how much that money is at this particular point. And I don't know what, I think it was Woods was the guy that did that one in 2007. I also had a question earlier and at some point, when we do decide to do this, the request was to include the city attorney as part of this and later on, we're going to talk about costs involving the city attorney at this point. So, you know, I don't know if you go out to bid and get something and then you put it off for six months to do that, do you have to then revalidate the bid or do you go back out again? So, I, you know, from Mayor Protem's standpoint, I understand what you're saying. I just don't know if going forward with this at this particular point or putting it on the shelf until we get rid of, until we do the city manager's evaluation, get rid of that step in the process.
When is that due, please?
It's actually on, tentatively planned on our agenda guide for the next meeting under closed session.
Right.
Coincide with what Mr. Edgar has brought up.
So, I think, like Councilmember Gross is saying, Councilmember Gross is saying about, I was going to ask, is there, if you were to get respondents, do they typically have a bid's value, or is valid for X amount of days, 60, 120 days, something like that?
Yeah, I mean, there would be a time period where it would become stale, but we could, we could get it out, do the evaluation, determine if the council wants to do this upon award of the contract. You can determine, you know, the budget and the cost would be determined at that time and whether you want to go forward with it and whether it coincides with next year's goals as well. And this actually ironically is on the, my goals, the city manager's goals that the council approved for the first year. So, I wanted to get it in front of you to have the option to release the request for proposals and to get any feedback that we could from you as a council now and, but we could postpone it or we could release it and bring back the results at a later time too.
But I think that, yeah, why heap more work on the staff at this point? I think another, you know, to continue it perhaps till after we do the evaluation, I think would be a prudent thing to do, so. With that, you have a motion and a...
Okay, and, and...
I find me though.
Can I?
Sure.
That doesn't mean anything, you know it. I agree, we've had in the past difficulty even hitting the city manager evaluations on time. Sometimes it's been, you know, way late. I think that, like Troy said, just from my perspective, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew. I agree with what they're saying. It seems a little premature, but I think that you get points for having it on here because you're trying to take action, so I don't think it's going to be any kind of a negative effect on you during your review. I just think it's a little early.
I mean, that's not really, that's not the only reason I put it on. The other part to mention is just in terms of, ideally, you try to time these and once I think we get into a process of doing these annually, you try to time it with the budget process so that, I had put down here, target date of February 2015, and that's to coincide approximately with the mid-year review. So, you've got the mid-year review, you've got analysis of revenues and expenditures, estimated actual for this fiscal year, and you do the kickoff of the budget process coinciding around that time. So, that's what I'm trying to get, my recommendation to the council, to go forward on an annual basis right around this time period. If we don't do it the first year, coinciding right with the budget process, that's okay, but that was my goal, to try to get it coinciding with that.
Makes good sense, Rich.
Could you take us through, if you start now, how many months till we'll actually have this meeting?
The, right now, if we started now, I think the date on here for the draft proposals to come back is November 13th. And so, December 15th meeting, we're going to try to keep it light for reorganization and for ceremonial purposes, so we likely would bring this back for award in January. So, that would be the January, the first, you know, the council meeting in January would be the earliest time really to bring it back unless we brought it back December 15. That would be an option too.
That's kind of what I was thinking. So, if we want to have this meeting though as early in the year as possible, we really do need to approve it now.
If we wanted to, that's correct.
It's not costing us anything to approve it now.
No, it doesn't cost anything to approve it.
Can I ask another question? So, are we, I think maybe where Rich is going, I was, one of my questions I had, Shelley has to bring out there in the audience. Hi, Shelley. City council elect, we want to have a warm start, we need the input from Jerry with all the eight years of her knowledge. Is it inappropriate to have Shelley sit through that process as an ex officio where she's not a voting person, but we have her save a little bit of the iteration so she can hear some of the opinions as she comes on, or is that inappropriate?
That sounds very appropriate.
It is good. Okay, so I, maybe, yeah. I'm thinking, yeah, am I being inappropriate?
It wouldn't be the first time. No, I said for us, I said.
Am I red? I feel red.
That's assuming she's volunteering.
Yeah, so I, anyway, I would offer that up as an option because I just, I think on the hot start and Jerry, you have a tremendous amount to add to this and I think it'd be helpful to have Shelley hear your input too.
I agree. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Troy, are you still good with that motion? But to include Shelley being an ex officio part of...
But you're talking about the motion and the second is to postpone to continue.
Right, but I think he was talking about the city manager part of it, weren't you, Troy?
Well, let me just clarify.
That would be appropriate.
Oh, that would be...
I'm trying to get everybody on board, so, you know, I think where Rich is asking, you know, do we, do we wait or, you know, I guess I'm unclear on what my motion is. I'm trying to...
I thought it was to wait.
Well, it was to wait, but are we staying there? You know, Rich, are you going to take a major exception? I'd like to say...
I just want to get rolling as fast as we can next year and the way the timing works, even if we start now, we're going to be in mid-February before we're setting any goals.
You know, at the Sand District, we did this and we hired somebody, but it cost 25 grand. I know this won't, but I, again, maybe I'm already to the point of somebody's hired to come in and we have the greatest meeting ever. Downtown revitalization, important, maybe not to everybody yet, but definitely the city hall and the funding and, I mean, we've got some big things ahead of us and I just don't know what would come, even if we got the best bid, would we do this? You know, would we have a strategy meeting when we, I mean, how much fuller can the cut be?
Well, and not only that, but to add to what you're saying is, we've already got, we've already identified some real big items and we haven't gotten real far with those, so if I understand what you're saying correctly, we're probably, it's not like we're in a position to add more things and it's kind of like doing the work twice. I mean, when you get to a point in those where you're coming to some kind of a decision-making or fruition, like you said, with the revitalization, then maybe this might be, but, you know, it's up to the council. I still think it's premature.
So, where are you at, Rich?
I just disagree. I mean, I just, to get rolling, this is free and it doesn't bind us to anything, it just lets us get the bids in-house. I actually had a question, why we even need somebody?
That's right.
You know, why, I envisioned more of a town hall meeting where people get to stand up, my vision of Los Alamos is, and we sit and listen to that for an hour and then we all speak of what our goals are and hash it out that way. Now, it might be a big undertaking, you know, it might end up in just this raucous screaming match, but it seemed to be worth a shot to save the money. But this to me is free and I think we want to do it as early as we can next year. We haven't done this in the two years I've been on the council, so I'd like to just get it rolling and it doesn't, it doesn't cost anything. You know, it just, it just gets the time rolling in this case.
It does cost so. If you go, if you go the route, I mean, to find out what the cost is going to be, there's no cost, but it's almost a little ingenuine to the people that you're sending this out to and that you might turn around later and do because responding to city bids and the specifics of the bids to make sure the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed is consuming. And so, for a person that does this in good faith, going about doing it only to find that the council changed their mind and didn't think it was necessary or that it was too costly, I mean, that's an option that you play with. But I know on bids that I've, that I follow up on sometimes, if there's 100 items on and I can only bid on three or four of them, I usually pass, but if I take the time to bid on 100 of them to find out that, you know, all that time was wasted is tough too. I, you know, the timetable is on page two and three of this and it talks about releasing it essentially today, putting it out and advertising it. There will be some cost, I assume, in advertising, in doing that. The staff rates the proposers, once it comes back, it'll be due back November the 13th and then council award on December the 15th. I guess at that point then, the decision is, do we, do we do it or do we not do it? So, I mean, you're, you're saying basically it's free to do this, but it really isn't. Are we committed to doing it when we get the cost figure back? And based on the, on the staff report under the financial, we don't know what that's going to be.
That's why I think when you do it, to find out what it's going to cost, to see, are we better off doing it ourselves?
Well, I think that, that right there is your answer. It's always better if you can do it yourself. I mean, look, we took on the general plan, which is an enormous amount of work. Stephen has had meeting after meeting, group meetings, community meetings. It's, it's a huge undertaking, but it does save us money that we're putting out, but it still takes staff time. So, I don't know, for me, I think we've already, we've already identified enough things, but we've got a motion and a second. It doesn't sound like it's going to change any, so do we want to take the vote now?
Yeah, Rich, I appreciate your feedback.
Fine, I can vote no, that's all right.
Yeah, all right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes. We're going to move on to item F and that was brought by Troy. It is resolution-making findings related to approval of the Second Amendment of OCFA Joint Powers Authority Agreement equity. You did want a staff report on this, right?
Yeah, and if Councilmember Pusamato, who is our board representative, wants to say anything, I'd be very interested in his opinion too.
Sure, okay, I'd be happy to step in city manager. So, this is the item that we voted on before with the equity issue, whereas cities like Irvine who pay far more into the fire authority and then other cities that are more established and were one of them, Stanton, I'm not sure about Cypress, but the concept of donor versus beneficiary. And the fire authority staff had developed a formula, and this is an equity settlement formula where a portion of some, I guess, cash contract cities, funds would then go back to these cities that feel they're overpaying. And the whole intent was to try and keep the OCFA intact as the 26-member board. So, that's what this is all about. the OCFA intact as the 26-member board. So that's what this is all about. We voted on it once. It passed, I believe, three to two to support the resolution. This is just going back because it was brought up in a court. I guess the county supervisors litigated against this, and the OCFA itself was looking for support reaffirmation from the different cities. And so, and this one, although I voted against it before, I think that I would vote in support of this one to just go back and see, because it's going to be tested in the courts, and we'll see where that goes, so.
Can I do one thing? We're getting close to the 9:45 witching hour, so can I poll the council? Are we good to move past the regular meeting time?
Yeah.
Everyone? Okay, great. I just want, I'll forget it and we'll be past it, and then we'll be in trouble.
Is that another way to stop that one?
All right, so Troy, it's back to you.
So, thank you, Councilmember Kuzamoto, for giving the background. And again, you know, I feel really strongly about this item, and as Warren had said, you know, we voted once at the city level to whether we supported or not, and I think Warren and I actually voted no. I'm going to vote no again, but I just want to kind of accentuate this one more time to the community is, think about this. The Orange County Fire Authority, we're talking about fire service. 1994, we formed the Joint Fire Authority. It gets funded. We were in early as a cash city, so we, or structural, we're structural. And so we got a pretty good deal. Everybody pays a portion of their property tax. So the whole premise on this issue is Irvine has sat back and said, you know what, we are growing bigger than any other city in Orange County. And if you take 1% of the sales tax or property tax on our base, we have a bigger base than Little Los Alamos or any of the other cities. So we are paying, Irvine's saying this, we're paying much more than our fair share. Like 30% or 36%, if I remember right, of the total budget is paid by Irvine because they are so big. And not only because they're big, but they have new properties, so they get assessed at new values. And so 1% is 1% here, but 1% of a $1.2 million home versus $800,000 here becomes, it's just a math equation. So at the resident level, no one's paying more, you know, unfairly. It's just like when you buy a house in Los Alamos, you pay the property tax of what it is today if you just buy it. And if you're Prop 13, you were here for 15, 20 years, you're paying lower. No one's unfairly treated. It's just a matter of timing. This issue, really have an issue with is that, you know, Irvine has pushed this thing politically to the Orange County Fire Authority Board and said, look, we want, matter of fact, if you guys don't make a payment to us, we may pull out. And if we pull out, this is a house of cards, the whole thing goes away. So it's a hostage-taking situation, and I really have an issue with that. You know, if you, if you look at this and you say, you know, so this is called an equity amendment, and the people that they're trying to make equitable is Irvine. And what they're trying to do is lump sum payments and stuff. So on the, so that's the policy issue. On the back end, Irvine, the city, hasn't really even decided what they want to use this. They have a fight going on, and wait, we use it for Great Park, let's use it for this. I mean, it's newfound money, and I think a little bit is, it's almost unbelief that this is actually happening. What a good deal. So imagine, like, now, this is, this is money collected under property tax, given through the structural property tax to a municipality, that's now going to be given to a city that didn't collect the property tax. On that premise alone, it's illegal. I personally think it's illegal. That issue was adjudicated through the courts, as Warren said, and it went, and even though we passed it three to, and a majority of the 26 cities passed it, and as adamant as I fought it the first time, I knew legally it wouldn't pass, and it didn't. It got killed. So now the Orange County Fire Authority is going to decide to fight it respectfully one more time, and they've appealed it now to the appeals court. They're continuing to spend money in the name of equity. I really think that that is a bad use of us to support it. Look, we gave it a shot the one time. And so then you ask, well, what is this? What are we voting on tonight? We're voting on a resolution to say we really mean it now. We voted before, and that wasn't enough to carry it. So this doesn't even introduce new evidence. It's through the discovery process of an appeal. There's nothing new here other than we meant it. So I'm not sure why we would get behind this. And at some point, I'm super supportive of Warren in doing his thing, and obviously if it doesn't, if I can't stop it here, one vote and influence, you know, and it passes as a majority, then that's what our city says, and I'll shut up and be quiet. And Warren will do his job and say aye. But I really wish that the city council, Los Alamos would take a stand, you know, although we may be small and on a percentage basis, a very small amount of the revenue, it's a very loud voice when one of 26 says, no, stop spending our money. It's not worth the appeal. This thing is going to run into a buzzsaw again. There's nothing new introduced. And I just think for us, you know, at some point, we've got to push back into Irvine and say, hey, look, this isn't acceptable. And, you know, so again, without getting now philosophical on what we would do after that, I would just respectfully request, and I'm going to put it out there as a motion that we would deny the resolution. It may die without a second. I'm okay with that. But if there's any interest out there to make the second and take a vote on it, my request on this item is to stop it here. And so that's my motion on the floor.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion, because I'd like to hear Councilmember Kuzamoto's input on it, number one. And number two, Troy, the understanding that we came away with, with the first volley, was that if Irvine chose to bail after 2020, I think is when it is, this is to extend it to 2030, that the fire department's belief is their service area then is greatly affected with the North and the South. And our assurance was regardless of which way this went, it would not affect Los Alamos because we were in early and are not part of the cash cities that are playing in the game here, and that it would not impact, worst-case scenario, Irvine pulls out.
Mm-hmm.
And that really impacts, because they're counting on Irvine's money coming in, even with agreeing to give it back, to help solidify things. And it's not just fire. They're doing the same thing, as I understand, with libraries and other county-related type situations. I'm supportive from the standpoint of what you're talking about, but I'm more concerned how it will affect our residents and the potential than do we lose fire service because it's based on the big pie. If the big pie gets a slice of it taken away, now the big pie isn't as big as it was anymore, and they're going to come back to us and re-create the formula. And suddenly, we're going to be faced with a higher cost to stay par with where we are in terms of fire service, paramedic service, and so on.
But Dean Lahabra, for an example, you know, contracts with L.A. County. We could contract with Long Beach. You know, if you look through this, we already have a mutual aid with them. I'm not fearful of what could happen, like if this thing falls apart. This is a, this is a fight where we're on the periphery. You said one thing, though, that I don't believe to be factually correct, which is, it does affect us. If this equity thing passes, the structural cities are taxed more, and the cash cities have to pay a lump sum payment as, as the tax money is collected from the general fund or from the, you know, as they go through the taxation process. So it does cost. This is not a freebie. And again, I don't want to get dramatic, but a vote for this tonight is a vote for, you know, illegally shifting tax money. I mean, I don't think this is the right vote, and it's definitely not one. I mean, we should have learned from the first time that it was wrong. Now we're going to come and say, no, you know, even though it's illegal to shift those types of monies to a different type of money and give tax to another jurisdiction. Specifically, if you look at the merits of where did it fail in court? Legally, it was the tax transfer issue. That's not going to change. So why, why would we just blindly support it one more time?
Well, I, I hear what you're saying. The, the fire chief, the female fire chief that came and gave the report.
Yeah.
What was her name?
Lori Zeller.
Yeah. Gave the report. I recall saying, no, it's not going to have any effect on you if, if it, if this thing fails. And I got the impression that they wanted to take it to this point so that it did go to the court on appeal, so that they could get a decision once and for all.
Okay, so let's let Rich, Rich, you have something to say?
Well, I was hoping to hear from Warren.
Sure, thanks, if I may. So I think to Councilmember Edgar's concern, as I understand it, the rate at which we're taxed, it's all set by formula, so our taxes won't go up from that standpoint. It's not to say that we'll get the same level of service. I think that's the big concern. But, you know, you are persuasive, Troy. I do understand, again, it comes down to me and my next-door neighbors. They bought early in their house, and their property tax is way low. Mine is way high, but that's just the way it is. It's just going to be an unfair system that will always be unfair. What I kind of consider when I look at the Irvine situation, that if this goes through, which I guess, you know, I think your viewpoint, Troy, is, has a lot of merit. If it goes through, what do they owe to their residents? And how do you, how would they, their council, and it's supposed to go just towards safety. So it could be fire, protection, or police. It's not to go put playgrounds into great parks or whatever. It's supposed to go towards that, the nexus's safety-related items. But how do they look at the residents, saying, hey, we went and fought the good fight for you, and we got this, all this load of cash back, but you don't get any of it? I think they've got even a bigger issue once, once they get the thing resolved. So I think with that, you know, colleagues, that, we supported it before. I'm willing to support it again, but, yeah, I think, is it, as to Troy's point, is it throwing, you know, good money after bad? Because is there any way for the authority and their legal counsel to win? And just, just for your information, Villa Park, 5-0 against. They did not support this. One of Laguna's, I don't remember, Laguna Woods, I think, did not support it. One, Laguna and the Gal, I forget which one, did not support this. So there are a few cities out there that did not support this. So here's a second bite of the apple. I'm willing to say we ought to support it because we were there before, but is it, is, you know, to Troy's point, it may be a losing cause. So that, you know, consider it, because it really comes down to equity. And Councilmember Gross brought up the fact about the libraries, the same situation, right? Irvine, they can build more housing tracks. In fact, they're going to build a bunch more on the side of the Great Park. And that's just going to throw the whole formula out of whack even more. So a few years down the road, they're going to be asking for more equity. And the cash contract cities, the cities that are not part of the structural fire fund that pay cash into that, that will be the source of funds that I think that transaction will take place, is how it'll be. But again, how do you, how do you get past the true taxation part of it? I don't know. So anyways.
Rich?
Yeah, I think, Troy, you were right, you know, when, when we had this discussion the first time, that this is a loser. But as I remember it, if it, if Irvine City Council and the OCFA board wins, it's cheaper, it's better for us in the long run financially. So I'd be willing to give it a shot, but fully expecting them to lose.
How do you think it's cheaper?
The analysis the lady gave...
Lori Zeller.
Showed that it was, it was much more beneficial under this current program than it was if Irvine completely got out.
I met with Lori Zeller, and I met with our battalion chief for this region of the OCFA, and they are actually using reserve funds to shift the equity payment. So it's costing money. It's maybe not direct today, but we paid into that reserve. And it definitely, you know, the precedent guy is that I'm more concerned about strategically, and 20 and 2030 is, you know, if this is successful now, you know, the message to Irvine, you know, this is the time when you show leadership, not, you know, basically, you know, go into this with, you know, all impunity. This is a leadership moment for them. And you know what? My time on there, Warren, you can justify this or not, but anytime they wanted to shift assets around, they were the well-respected on the board of 26 that no one, you know, everybody kind of realized how important they were. So they never got an equitable treatment on the board. They, you know, they have the most assets. They have the most fire stations. They, you know, they, the staff attend more events in Irvine to support community activities. I mean, it, you know, so from my view, again, 10 to 20 years out, you start here, then you're going to have the problem on the library board. This is math. I mean, it's not going to, and so at some point, we gotta very gingerly, at the right point, look, we supported it the first time. The court's made a decision. Our non-supporting of it isn't going to kill it off, but it sends a strong message that says, hey, look, guys, now we need you to lead Irvine. I mean, they're all great guys, and gals. They just need to step it up and look out for the smaller cities that have been a part of this. And, you know, because we all know that this is going to be a better thing. But I promise you, I went through the financials in detail with Lori, with the deputy chief.
Chief Zeller.
I was in that meeting, I believe.
Yeah. And, and it was, it's definitely not free, guys. I mean, we are paying for that, so.
Well, if I might, and then we'll go ahead and we'll, you know, see if we can get a motion and a second. I supported it the first time, and actually had a discussion with Warren after, saying, I wish you had been more clear about where you were coming from, because I think, I felt like I got caught with my pants down. But nevertheless, I see that this is already in the process. I'd like to see it all the way through because it, one of two things will happen. They'll either fail, like Troy's saying, and it will set a precedent so that we don't have to revisit this down the line with the library boards and those kinds of things, because they'll already know that it's a loser. And if they win, then as some of the other council members have said, they stay in the, in the plan, and it's better service overall for us because, you know, they're a big contributor, just to simplify it, Troy. And I understand what you're saying. So do you have a motion? One way or the other?
We have.
We had a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay.
So if I may, one more, one more, you know, bit of information. One of the things, there's a, an activist that attends all the fire authority meetings, and there was one thing that he quoted Mayor Gramahia about, about that, you know, we're a community that we're willing to pay our way. So if we're at a deficit, you know, it's like, how do you make that, kind of, make that up? So, so I think the counterpoint to all this, and I guess I'm kind of wavering in my decision. I think I'm going to not support this, and it, and it is, it's going to be, no matter what, it's going to be inequitable, no matter what they do. The, the thing about it is, the threat is Irvine's going to pull out of the fire authority. Is that going to be the end of the world? I think that we're still going to have fire services. We're going to be still part of the structural fire fund. It may look a little bit different, and we'll just have to see where that goes. But that's, you know, down the road. So I think with that, whether, whether we support this or not, the, the appeal is going forward. This is just, I think, a way to amass, again, this, all these resolutions from the member cities and municipalities to say, where do you want to go? So with that, I'll just kind of see where the vote goes.
Okay, so can we have clarification on the motion and the second?
My motion is to not support this resolution.
Okay, Dean, you were the second, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll make a substitute or alternate motion that we do move forward with it and, and see what the outcome of the lawsuit is.
Second.
All right, so we go with the first, with the latest recommendation. So that would be, you'd be voting on my motion, and Richard's second, to move forward with it and see what the outcome of the, of the case is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so it fails. So we're going to go back to Troy's. Troy, you want to restate your...
I make a motion to reject the resolution.
Okay, and you have a second with Dean? All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Motion passes. Okay, so we're going to move on to item, discussion item 9B, which is discussion of the city attorney fees. It's getting pretty late. I just want to throw an idea out there. And I know, I know there's some real specific desire to speak about this, but we also have a public hearing after this. So are we interested in seeing this all the way through? Do we want to move this to the next meeting? How do you want to handle it? Dean, this was your item, so whatever you want to do, I'll support you in.
I don't think it'll take more than a few minutes.
Okay. Dean, are you good with that? Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and move on. Staff report, please.
There is a written staff report, and basically, attorney's fees for the first quarter of this year, which is July, August, and September, amount to retainer of $24,007. The budget for retainer for the year is $150,000. $24,000 is 64% of that. What I think caused the concern was that there are a couple of other things that the attorney built, that we attorney, that the attorneys billed for, my firm. And one of those is general plan, which comes up every eight to 10 years. And that amounts for that quarter to about $9,285. It's not part of the attorney's budget for the year, and it's, it's a reasonable amount, I would say. And then the other thing is labor, negotiations primarily, and those are supposed to be part of a different budget as well. And those won't happen again for another four years. But those amounted to $3,900 for the first quarter of this fiscal year. And in addition to that, there's $855 in litigation, although I don't think it's been called out as litigation. But that's the Pichus motions, which I referred to in the staff report. The litigation for the year, the budget is $5,000. $855 is less than a quarter of that, so we're, we're just fine with that. And then Westcom, which has only been $225 for the first quarter, which is, again, well within budget.
Okay.
So I think we're fine in terms of, of staying within budget unless something really unforeseen happens. And that would probably be litigation. You might have to adjust the $5,000 budget for that. But other than that... have to adjust the $5,000 budget for that. But other than that, the retainer and those kinds of services are going to be well within budget.
Okay. All right. So, we'll bring it back to the council. Dean, this was your issue, or your item.
Could I ask, Glenn, what is the total amount that we approved in the 1415 budget for city attorney?
It's exactly as the city attorney stated. It's $150,000 for legal services and $5,000 for litigation.
Okay. Where my concern comes in, and I've discussed this with the city manager and with Glenn this afternoon as well, I don't know any other function that we overbudget. And in this particular case, his retainer at $6,000 a month for 12 months works out to $72,000, I believe. Is that right? Okay. So, we've actually budgeted $150, knowing that we're going to spend more. And the response last year and this year is, everything came out good because I was under budget. If you've got $150 to play with, you're always going to be under budget, because when you get close, you're going to stop. My concern really is, we've put kind of an open-ended total of $150,000, and we're concerned with $12,000 for fireworks or something else in the process. We could eat up, burn up that $150,000 and still be within budget. At what point do we have oversight? And the city attorney is an employee of the council. And so, the council should have some type of ability to discern how the money is being spent. We understand that the $6,000 retainer per month is at a much lower cost. That's the way the bid came in. We understand that there's going to be certain situations, labor, planning. When I look at the bills and I look at the monthly reports back, I think we're at a point where we've lost some control, or we've made some decisions through the ad hoc committee, and I'll look at the two that were on the ad hoc committee, of saying, well, we didn't blow the $150 last year, so we won't blow it this year. We'll put it in. But there's no guarantee that we're not going to spend $20,000 on something that we don't agree to. And so, I'm of the feeling that we've set a very high fee, or a very high budget, which we could go back. In other words, I'd almost like to see us cut that down and put it down to, what was it last year that was spent? Do you know? Since you got?
A little over $100,000. The year before that, I think it was over $150,000. The year before that, it was $250,000.
Okay. And that was under different firms though, too, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not doing this for you, or saying that there's a problem with our rates or how we're doing it. I'm doing it from the standpoint of the council, so that we have an understanding of how money is being spent and where it is. And the responses that I've seen has been, but we're within budget. We're over the retainer, but we're within budget. So, what is a realistic figure to be within budget? If we were to take $30,000 of it and move $30,000 of it into an undesignated reserve, in the reserve, as an example for our budget people, then the budget is $120,000. And that's the target. Now, if we wind up with some major litigation, and I don't know if the $5,000 is above that $150 or not. If we wind up with some major litigation, or something else that comes up that requires it, I recognize that labor is not going to occur for four years. I recognize that the general plan is not going to occur for another eight to 10 years. That being said, we're over budget. His bills this month were double what the retainer was. They were triple the month before. And it's okay, because I'm within budget. And I'm not questioning how it was. I'm just questioning from the standpoint of my colleagues here, is this something we need to be concerned about, where we have some restraints put on the thing? Or are we good in July to say, it was a good year, we didn't need it, we're within budget, and we're all okay? I just, I'm concerned, because I've seen certain things happen that expenses have been allocated that I don't think we agreed to necessarily here on the council. As an individual council member, if I call up the city attorney and say, I need a determination on this, is that okay? Where do we control ourselves in this particular process? I believe, Carrie, you mentioned it, I don't remember whether it was the last meeting or the meeting before, something to the effect about, you don't work for the citizens, and you don't work for the council, but you work for the community. And I'm not sure if I understood that correctly.
You work for the city.
There you go. I work for the city.
And I'm not your lawyer, or your lawyer, or your lawyer.
Individually, I understand that. But I want to make sure that we're on the same page as we're moving forward in this particular process, and that we've not just authorized $50,000, $60,000 more that could be spent, and we're still within budget. So, that's the reason for my discussion at this particular point, is with my colleagues, are we good with that? If we're good with that, then fine, we continue to move on. If we have some concerns, then now's a good opportunity to discuss it, and then decide where we go from here.
Okay. I'm going to go next. Just having been here for eight years now, when we had Best Biston Creer, the allotment was much larger. And we cut it, and we cut it again, and we cut it again. I think that the staff report explains exactly where the monies are going to, and the special circumstances for the general plan. And I think it was very thorough. I don't have a problem with the $150,000. I understand what you're saying, Dean, but I don't, I don't want to take it away and not have it there. I think it's a fair budget. It's much less than what it used to be. And for me, I don't want to micromanage at that level. And I'm not saying that that's what you're saying, but to me, that's what it would feel like for me. So, I'm fine with the budget the way it is. I think the staff report explained exactly where those monies were spent and how they were different. And I'm good with it. I don't have any issues. So, I'll go ahead. Rich, you had your hand up next.
I think that maybe it's really a city manager issue, that at the midterms, we could see if we could tighten up the budget any.
That's exactly what I was going to suggest. I mean, typically, a good time to review the expenditure, a really good time to review citywide expenditures. I've talked about it earlier tonight. Mid-year review, February council meeting, look at all the, especially general fund expenditures, look at all the general fund revenues, compare that budget to estimated actual. Included in that is the city attorney budget and litigation, and prepare that in a detailed report to the city council. You also, the council is getting copies of the attorney bill, so if there's questions or concerns on an ongoing basis, ask me, and we can research that, and they can work with Carrie, provide report back on an ongoing basis to you, too. I think ideally, down the line, we are giving you expenditure reports, detailed expenditure reports, which has budget and actual. And so, that shows where we are as we go through the fiscal year, the total of $150,000 compared to the actual expenditures. Mid-year is a great time to review it.
I would be remiss if I didn't thank my colleague for his thoroughness and taking time to fully explore this. On the other hand, though, we're looking for money as a city, so let's not get caught short. I know it's tempting to cut, but the worst thing we could do is cut it and then find out we're $20,000 short when we've already spent the 30 we saved.
Yeah, we are. I mean, from my experience, we are, the hourly rate that we're paying on the retainer basis is a reasonable rate. And then, once we are above that retainer amount, the rate goes up. But that's very typical in terms of a city attorney budget. We will continue, from the staff perspective, to monitor that, work with the city attorney's office, and we do. I mean, we're very conscious of it. The rest of the staff is very conscious of it. We try to do, even though we're small, we're lean, we try to do as much as we can to research it. The team does a great job of researching it on our end before we involve the city attorney, and we'll continue to do that. So, I can pledge that from staff's perspective, and we have a really good
Thank you.
working relationship with Carrie.
All right. Yeah, a couple of things. So, we set the structure up. We had interviewed four, five, or six firms when we hired Carrie's firm. And one of the criteria that we had is that we evaluated the rate. And something that was attractive to the rate is that when we looked at this, there's two components, as we've talked about. There's the retainer amount, and then the amount above it. And as Brett said, the elixir, the addiction part comes on the retainer value, which is, just for the community's sake, if we can just, how much per hour?
$150.
$150, really good for legal fees. But once you go up over the retainer amount, what's the rate switch up to?
$22.
$22.
So, really, what we're talking about is almost, little bit less than half, $72,000 of 1 something, 100 and something thousand is at the low rate. And so, we're really getting a blended rate of somewhere between the 175 to $200 an hour. And I think the discussion comes down to philosophically. And Dean, I think you're on to something deeper than just the issue of, what are we doing, and what are we paying, and what's the right amount? Is our city, again, super small, we need to decide as a council, are we trying to have specific help when we get to a point? And we, I mean, look, if we were going to be really kind of Spartan about it, we would just have the city attorney attend maybe one staff meeting a week before the council meetings, or however, attend the meetings at the council, so he's real time to be able to respond. And then, everything else could be queued up through the city manager. And then, we're only using the city attorney as really an outsourced service when we really need it. And I think, Dean, you're on to something here, which is the retainer kind of covers the basic levels of service. Maybe enough, maybe not. And I think to Rich's point, but enough to meet minimum requirement. The issue is, over and above that, it seems discretionary that you would go through. And your statement is, why was that statement important when you said, Carrie, who do you work for? And he goes, I work for the city, not the council, and no, but specifically us. Because usually, as a council, we've only used the city attorney, where we've tried to, when we directed staff to use the city attorney. Hey, I'm getting ready to send off a contract. Send it to the city attorney and have them review it, versus being more actively involved with the staff, and that the city attorney has the discretionary capability to get involved or not, because as long as he's within the purview of the budget, the bigger budget, not the retainer, he has the discretion to help where he feels fit, not necessarily where we feel he needs to be. But he's in a much better position because he's a lawyer, and he understands that job than we do. And a few times, we've crossed swords. Three times since Carrie's group has been here, we've had things come onto the agenda that we've basically thrown off the agenda and said, where did that come from? And Carrie said, you know, I'm trying to do the job looking out for the city's liabilities. Well, who started that? Did Brett start it? Did somebody? And so, philosophically, again, I think this all fits together, is what is the role of the city attorney? Is he meeting the expectation of, is his firm, meeting the expectation of that? What's the minimum requirement of lawyer fee? Is that the retainer? I think that that's worth, again, I don't mean to be in the review mode of the city manager and city attorney, but we need to evaluate, again, what are the city attorney services we're getting? What is the minimum retainer amount that's required, adjusted appropriately to meet minimum requirements? Everything that he said, whether it's supporting a lawsuit, a pitchers motion, all of these things are legitimate. We should budget an amount for them, so we get a real number, not a discretionary number where we, I've felt this way, too, where the city attorney or that organization has felt the ability to get involved where I didn't necessarily think that they needed to be. And I hate that feeling of, well, why are they getting involved here? But if we have a discretionary amount, so I would be supportive to basically look at an evaluation overall. How is the service? What is the cost, the minimum retainer? Is there areas that we want him to, that role to focus on in the future? Is that something else? And I do think, instead of just blindly cutting it, like Rich says, and say, hey, look, I want it, I really want it to be 80 grand. I want it to be zero, but it's not going to happen. But why don't we have a discussion and just an evaluation of how we're doing legally, and then set the expectations for Carrie in a very structured way, so that he doesn't have frustration from the council? That would be my request, and I would hope that maybe you would support that, Dean.
Now, if I may, to follow back up, I had the discussion for about an hour this afternoon with both the city attorney and the finance director, and we talked.
City manager.
I'm sorry, city manager.
Well, it's you, Dean.
We talked about, well, there's labor costs that were involved, but we're not going to have to deal with that for four years. So, we kind of knew that going into this, that there would be some labor expense. And there's the general plan, but we're not going to have to deal with that for another 10 or 12 years type of thing. But we knew that going into advance. So, part of the first step that was made with the ad hoc committee in terms of identifying budget, maybe there's subcategories in the process, so that we know when we've reached that peak in that subcategory. You know, when we looked at the idea of a retainer, and I think the retainer thing was in several of the proposals that we had, and I'm not trying to evaluate the services thus far. I'm trying to think of how we're functioning in this particular process. Is there, is there a way that we can watch what's going on, so that suddenly, at the end of the year, we're at $155,000 and no litigation, because something happened, or we didn't plan for it? We know, looking toward next year, the amount spent on general plan isn't going to need to be included, and labor costs aren't going to need to be included. So, what specifically then, as you mentioned, is the retainer intended? In other words, if 40 hours a month is not sufficient, maybe we need to raise that, or negotiate a different rate for that 40 hours, because it requires more. To be honest with you, I believe city staff meets once a week in a staff meeting. I don't know how frequently the city attorney attends the staff meetings.
The city attorney attends once a month. Prior to the staff meeting that we have, which is on Tuesdays, the city attorney meets the Tuesday before the council meeting.
Okay. And so, what happens if some burning issue comes up for a pending council, and he's not there? Does he, in other words, where does the 40 hours actually, it's a placeholder. There's 40 hours. And I understand that. But at the same time, how do we control it within the 40 hours? And I'm not trying to micromanage, it's just not my business to know that.
If I may?
Yeah.
First of all, with all due respect, you don't need to control it as long as it's under 40 hours, because it's going to be the $6,000, whether it's 30 hours or 40 hours. The first and third months of this fiscal year, I believe it was just the $6,000, and no extra services other than the labor and the general plan. Also, the retainer includes the planning commission, which is my partner primarily, and all the planning matters, and all the staff reports that she reviews and rewrites and researches. So, when the retainer, for example, August, when we had $6,000 retainer and another $6,000 of special services of retainer-type things, that was retainer and another $6,000 of special services of retainer-type things, that was because of planning matters. I mean, it was also a lot of matters for the city. Um, but contracts, I mean, there are all kinds of things that we do. Um, and we try to keep it within the retainer. We, um, what council member Edgar was talking about as far as a few times when I brought things up on my own because I thought they were legally important to do, and I, I've asked that they be on the agenda because that's what city attorneys do, um, those have been maybe somewhat coincidentally, but they've been in months when the retainer was not exceeded. So, if I've got, you know, forty hours to give the city in a particular month and, and I'm only spending, my partner and I are only spending twenty-five hours, that might be a good time to spend some more time on things that I think the city needs. They get on the agenda, you can reject them. Um, something that's going to come up at the next meeting, I believe, is going to be something that you haven't asked me to do, but the, um, uh, you adopted a resolution, I think it was several months ago, on prevailing wage. Well, we need to deal with that again before the end of the year and make sure that, that our prevailing wage ordinance complies with state law as of January first. You haven't asked me to do that. Brett hasn't asked me to do that, but I'm going to do it. And you're going to thank me for it because it's important and it's, it's one of the things that a city attorney does. Anyway, I'm rambling and talking too much.
Do you feel the forty hours is sufficient, or that's just barely making it?
I think the forty hours is a reasonable approximation of what it takes. Some months it's going to be a little more. Um, I, I think it was Councilman Edgar said that it's like a hundred and seventy-five dollars average per month, something in the, and that's probably accurate. Um, I would be happy to not have a retainer and to just work on an hourly basis for the city, but it would be at the $225 rate. And you chose this. I offered that when we sat back there and you hired me. I offered that as an option, and you chose this, and I think it's been beneficial to the city, um, in the, in the time that I've been here.
So, going back, I mean, I do think, Dean, that, again, it's worth going back to what we put him on contract or this firm, evaluate what the services are. You know, we may want to rethink through the rate. Uh, we may want to rethink through the retainer. I mean, you know, the good thing, I mean, I'm in the professional services business, so, you know, I mean, every year a client wants to reevaluate the services I provide or somebody in my company. You know, that's a fair discussion to have. And it, I mean, let's be honest, at least two of us were up here going, um, there is some discretion. I mean, even if he feels even on a, a low, he just said, Kerry just said, on a forty-hour, you know, if I, if I'm running a little bit short, I may reach out a little bit further. Well, that reaching out sometimes isn't, that philosophically isn't something we'd ask to be done. It's just been done because he's got time to do it. It may, you know, I'll give it another example. The example he used is a great one for the reason why it's a good deal. One of the issues that we took on, which had to do with some litigation, we got an email randomly from somebody that really had an issue, and it started a chain reaction of work behind the scenes. And that's the one I took exception to. And, and I really struggle with, like, I don't want to have that reactive of a city attorney function. Just, I don't. And so, I want to go back to the contract, and I, I don't want to shortchange it, but I'd rather just look at the structures, say, are we satisfied with the way it's structured? And if not, Kerry's a reasonable guy. Let's just have a discussion and see from here forward so we don't have these miscommunications. Because I'm feeling the same thing you are.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here.
If I can just respond to that?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, first of all, I committed to two years at that rate, and I might have asked for an adjustment if not for that, but, um, I'm good until the two years are up. And as far as the example Councilman Edgar just gave, if I hadn't been proactive on that, you would have been sued. It's guaranteed. You would have been sued. And maybe you don't mind being sued, but I, I consider it my job to keep you from being sued when possible. So, that's where that came from, and, and I'm, I'm pleased that I did it. I would do that again, although I might, um, ask the mayor first, although the mayor did support it, and one other, one other council member supported getting it on the agenda. I would have been very upset if the council hadn't considered that and, and taken that action because otherwise you would have been sued, and for no good reason.
Okay. My thing is, is that we hire you because you're the legal expert and we're not. Um, I don't know that we should be deciding, uh, legal issues because we're ill-equipped to do that. Um, I will say that in the past, um, do you happen to know, Brett, what we paid, uh, Colontano and Levin per hour?
I, I don't. I don't know that.
Glenn, do you recall? Anyone? I think it was more.
It's before I was here, before Glenn was here. I don't know. We
I just thought in this, you might have looked at it, just.
Yeah, I don't.
I think it was more. And, and I think that we need to take into consideration that I know, I've heard Kerry say on, you know, a few different occasions, I didn't really even charge you guys for that. I just, you know, it was only a couple of minutes here, a couple of minutes there. I didn't charge you. So, do we want to get into a relationship with our legal counsel where we're, um, going to make him nickel and dime us to where he, he can justify to us that the retainer is, is legitimate? Do you know what I mean? I don't know that, for me, I don't want to get into that, that, you know, finer detail. From what I recall, when we did the city attorney interviews, you were one of the lower ones, and you did offer us the, the two-tiered structure. I remember that being very common if I, and I, you know, it's so funny, I just came across those, so I'll go home and I'll, I'll look at those and see if what I remember is correct. But it, it seems like you're, you're a very standard, your approach is very standard from what we've seen in the past and what we saw as competitors for the job against you. Um, if we, if we carve this out so much that we're, we're, I think overstating our, our position to say you should be doing this and you shouldn't be doing that in many of the things that you do. I understand what he's saying. There's a very specific instance, and, and that's something that maybe we can discuss in closed session. But, um, we're going to find ourselves, if we start nitpicking at this, no one's going to want the job. And I think that in the past, we've had a lot of turnover for reasons that had to do with the council. And I think we're starting to hit a really comfortable stride. We've got Shelley coming on. She's a really level-headed gal. Um, the council's working well together. I just don't want to see us, um, create an environment where nobody wants to work for us. I don't think that he's overpriced. He's actually lower than what we've paid in the past. I don't think that, um, he charges us for every little thing, like I said, and he could do that just to justify. And I, I don't want us to become a city that nobody wants to work for. So, um, I maybe am not involved at the intricate level that Mr. Edgar is, but from my perspective, over the eight years that I've served, um, he's done a good job. He's very thorough. And yes, I would prefer you prevent us from being sued as opposed to the extra costs that would come with litigation. So, other than that, do we, um, do we have any kind of motions that we want to take on this with regards to special actions that we deem necessary?
Can I just clarify one part because it's almost turned adversarial, and that was not the intent? The, the purpose was to be able to have a, an open discussion, which we've, which we've had. It wasn't based on quality of service or quantity of service. I think it's more a situation where if we're going to exceed double and/or triple what, what we're, what, what the monthly bills are supposed to be, it'd be helpful to know that in advance or have some type of breakdown and explanation. And again, for the ad hoc, going forward to try and look on a budgeting standpoint to put down certain parts. We've arbitrarily said five thousand for litigation. Uh, based on history, that may or may not be a good number. Um, based on history, and it sounds like the, the agreement for two years is coming up maybe this next budget year. Um, I, I'm not trying to micromanage. I just don't like being caught with a surprise when suddenly the bills are much higher and there's really not an explanation. There's just kind of line items. It did say a little bit about what they were, but, um, so, you know, we're four months in on this particular budget at this particular point. Really, we're three months in. Um, that, that's close, will be four here shortly with October. Just knowing where we're going is, is part of the discussion so that we're not going to be shocked at the end of the year if we're running $12,000 or $18,000 on a regular basis and suddenly looking back and saying, whoa. And that was my only purpose for bringing it up, was to allow us the opportunity to discuss it.
Mm-huh. I, um, I would be interested to see historically if, if the trend now is the same as the trend in past years.
We, we, we won't know that. But again, um, in selecting the firm, he doesn't have the same, it's not a BBNK operation, and it's not a Sandra Levin type of operation. It, it's a smaller partnership, which is part of what we were looking at.
Mm-huh.
And I, and I believe, you know, what we're getting is the same service that we knew we were going to get. It's just the, the rationale that it's within budget bothers me because it seems like there's a big chunk of that budget that's undesigned. And, uh, so.
Well, no, I guess.
I think the recommendation is receive and file.
Yeah. What, what my point was, Dean, was that I think that you look at it historically throughout the time that we've been here, you're going to find that the law firms are over one month and under. I think that's very standard. But, you know, if, if there's something that Kerry can do to put your mind at ease, you know, I'm supportive of that. But just remember, all the extra time that we have him put towards coming up with those answers is money that we're paying. So, it's almost counterproductive. Anyways, we're going to receive and file?
Uh, just got one more question.
Okay.
Mayor or city attorney, in the provisions in the contract, isn't there an evaluation clause to just go through so that we can provide you constructive feedback?
I don't recall, but I'd be happy to participate in such, if that's what the council desires.
I mean, we should have a mindset, especially when we're running really good, like we've been doing as a council for the last year. You know, we want to build our team members, and we want to be able to provide them constructive feedback. Two of us up here aren't feeling comfortable. None of us want to change out. I, I want to be constructive, so that I'm not all over the place. I'd like to go back. And, and then, you know, the two years when it comes up, I'd rather be able to be mindful of what works, what didn't work. Um, I'm feeling the same, or I'm feeling something. It may not be the same as Dean, but, um, I, I just want to give in a forum of constructive feedback, something that works, and I don't want to battle it up here in public every time.
Sure.
So, it would be helpful to close that, not other than just to receive and file, but why don't we have a discussion with the contract, go through that, whether it's like an evaluation and see what's working, what's not, give constructive feedback? I mean, if he's using the leeway, then that's a problem.
All right, Warren?
Yes, so, sorry, I didn't speak on this matter. I was going to try and stay quiet. I think ultimately, there's, there's a budget that's deliberately determined at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, looking at some past actuals, you know, we're overdouble that in past years. So, um, you know, the, the way that I'm familiar with running projects, I mean, we're not going to try and hit everything exactly every month or every billing cycle. So, there's going to be ups and downs, and I think that's the, kind of the intent. Um, so we're under budget, or, or we're maintaining a, a budget, and these coming, his firm is coming under it. I think we're doing pretty good. I think the question becomes, are, are we, year after year, overfunding it? And that'll be a question year after year. So, and I do support what Councilmember Edgar says. I think we do owe ourselves and the city attorney's firm a, an evaluation. I think it's just fair constructive feedback, and, uh, we'll just try and plan that at some early opportunity. But, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So Troy, do you have a recommendation of when you'd like to see that happen?
Well, Jerry, how important is it before you leave that you want to be a part of it? I, I want to respect that. I'll do it whenever.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, I would like to be a part of it since I, you know, actually had interaction with them for some time now.
Sure.
I know when I came on, when I was new, you know, there were things that we were expected to weigh in on, but we had no input really because we hadn't been here. We hadn't had any experience. So, if we could get that on the, um, next regular city council meeting?
Can Shelley be a part of that too? I don't mean to be her pimp up here, but I, I think it's important to get some.
Well, I don't think that she has any input. So, for me, I, I don't, I don't mean to be unkind to you, but I just don't think it's necessary.
Lisa here as well?
That's up to you.
Yeah. Do you think it would be constructive to have Lisa here, Kerry?
Is, is that something we would do in closed session, or we do in open session?
Close session.
Yeah.
Close session.
I think it's good. Maybe we could put it for the next agenda, both Lisa and Kerry. And, uh, and then if council members have specific concerns, like you said, Troy, if we could have those questions ready to go so that, uh, we can move through that really quickly, that would be a big help. Okay, so.
We will have, there's quite a few items on the, that will be on closed session at the next meeting, but, you know, just to.
Should we just have a special meeting? I'm serious, I mean.
Oh, maybe we could just have, we can, we can agendize city attorney evaluation on at the same time. City manager evaluation's on there.
But what about a special meeting if we have the same?
I think a special meeting might be good.
A planning commission meeting, just do it earlier than the planning commission? Would that be conducive?
Do it as a five.
Rich?
Fine.
If that works, look at the schedules.
Five o'clock.
Yeah.
Look at the schedules. That may be.
When's the planning commission meeting?
First Monday?
Second.
Second Monday?
I think that's good.
Okay, so, Wendy, you'll reach out to all of us to make sure that we're able to make that?
I know it worked for Lisa.
Yeah. You have a weird look on your face. Is there something?
The, the, on Tuesday, we don't make that.
Oh.
So, we're open Monday, but we're closed Saturday.
Perfect.
Okay. Well, look at some dates, poll the council, and find out what the best date. It doesn't have to be right before the planning commission. Could be on a different day.
It does need to be before the next council meeting because I'm taking a vacation like the day after the next council meeting.
Okay, okay. All right. So Wendy, you'll poll the council, and we'll, we'll touch base. Okay, so we're going to go ahead on item B and just receive and file. Moving on to ten public hearings, uh, ten A, introduce ordinance one-four-dash-zero-nine zoning ordinance amendment Z O A one-four-dash-o-three to allow retail use in the planned light industrial zone. Uh, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, uses when the industrial, you know, within the industrial area. I've been part of an ongoing conversation with the planning commission. They've been looking at fitness places. They've been looking at circulation, safety. They've also been looking at increasing sales tax in the area. Well, one of the bites of the apple, they thought, when analyzing the industrial areas, was delivering a resolution to the city council, making a recommendation to allow, to do a code change that makes it easier for retailers in the industrial area that face Cerritos, Los Alamos Boulevard, and Catella, um, to open instead of going through a conditional use permit process. So, what they've done here is they've introduced, uh, they've passed their own resolution recommending that you adopt an ordinance, first reading, of course, um, to change the uses in the planned light industrial area along those corridors. So, the areas like Sartreus, Chartreuse over on Cerritos, wouldn't have to get a CUP if they opened up there. They thought it was a way to incentivize more sales tax producers along those main thoroughfares and streamline the process that they would go to. Staff had no objections, supported the idea. They'll continue their industrial talk on other topics, but they wanted to wrap this one up and deliver it to the city council. Tonight is a public hearing. Um, it would be, we would recommend that you open the public hearing, take any necessary testimony, and then introduce for first reading.
Okay. Bring it back to the council. I'm going to go ahead and open it for, um, public comment. I'm sorry, Stephen, what was it? For the public hearing, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing and bring it back to the council. Any questions? No?
No.
Warren?
So, Stephen, if this change, so we have the general plan update going on. Is, is this contrary, consistent with, or just kind of totally out of?
It's separate, but it doesn't totally conflict with the general plan. The general plan has several goals in it regarding economic development, and this works within that.
But, okay, so, so here's, why wouldn't that have been folded into the general plan?
Because the general plan isn't zoning. The general plan is high-level, 10,000-foot policy-level, um, guidance towards making zoning changes.
So, but if the general plan stipulator or said, uh, whatever, um, this type of usage there, then we would still be doing this?
Yeah, you still would be. And after you do the general plan, you're going to be doing many of these.
Mm-huh, amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
That's a motion to waive the reading and introduce.
I apologize.
Um, ordinance number fourteen-dash-zero-nine, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Los Alamos, California, approving zoning ordinance amendment Z O A fourteen-dash-zero-three to amend section seventeen-point-one-zero-point-zero-two-zero of the Los Alamos Municipal Code. the Los Alamos municipal code to allow retail sales general as a permitted use in storefronts facing Catella Avenue, Los Alamos Boulevard and Cerritos Avenue in the planned light industrial PM zone of the city without a conditional use permit and directing a notice of exemption be filed for categorical exemption from a SEQA.
Okay. And one just note for the record, I'm supportive of this because it's along the corridor, but I don't want to see this creep into our industrial any further. We had a really good report from Colin Drucker during the general plan, and he said, you know, for a small city, you're really very fully staffed. You've got an industrial, which a lot don't, and you've got retail and you've got residence, and it's very well balanced. So I want to make sure that we're cognizant of that when we move forward. Other than that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Moving on to mayor and council initiative business. Who'd like to go first? Okay, I'll go first. You guys, snooze, you lose. Okay. I want to say thank you to, to the public works department. I, in the past couple of meetings, have talked about trying to upgrade some of the parks that have gone unaddressed for several years. They're still maintained well, but we had some issues with the, the dry wood chips and people getting splinters and, you know, it just, it just appeared that there was something that needed to be done. So we were told the cost of it and, and we didn't necessarily know that we had the will to at the council level, take those steps. So I wanted to say thank you to them because though they've worked with a grant writer, if that's correct, Tony, and are looking for ways to get grant money for rubberized surfaces. So I just wanted to say to you, thank you for responding to my interest on behalf of the community and taking action to get something done about it. I'm very grateful. I wanted to report out attending the vector meeting. Jared Devers came tonight and gave the, gave the report on the new kinds of mosquitoes. Brett, I'm going to pass this on to Wendy to put, does she put stuff on the website or do you?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to pass this on to you. This is additional information, Wendy. And for the community, I think that you definitely should use our city website to stay informed about some of the really important things that affect this community and the potential illnesses that can come from this are devastating. And on top of that, the long-term effects that can affect you much later from now can be really devastating. I attended the retirement for General Jones. It was a very fun, a fun night, and what a great guy he is. He's been very responsive to us. We had some issues along the borders of the base with some, I don't want to call it composting. What, what's the word we use to not say composting?
Mulching.
Oh yeah, mulching. Okay. There was some mulching going on and it was creating some smells and some flies and lots of truck traffic. And we've been dealing with that for years. I've been trying to remedy that problem. And within just a very short period of time, the trucks have moved to the interior. They're no longer mulching there and the dust is minimal. There's no flies. So I just wanted to say a very special thank you to him for being such a good community partner and so quick to act. The joint forces training base elected officials group, we talked about it earlier in the fourth of July item, but we did attend. And Brett's got some items that he'll talk to you about later. We also met with the school district working group. I will say, just for Stephen, for heads up, they're not happy with the potential zoning change to their property. And we know we've received a couple of other letters stating that other areas are not. Arrowhead was one of them. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that ahead of time. If you didn't know, I'm sure they'll be coming to the meetings to address their concerns. And there are some other properties over there that are not happy about that also. I think that's one of the things that the council should look at more in depth when the general plan comes forward because it could have some significant impacts on their worth of their property. We've got businesses that are, been here for many years. They're thriving and I would hate to do something that's going to negatively impact them.
Yeah, they, John Clivia did go to the planning commission meeting to express the same concerns on behalf of the school district that he did at the working group.
Great, great. I just wanted to make the council who was not at the meeting aware that they've expressed a real strong concern that they're not happy about that. And with that, I'll go ahead and move on to the next person. Dean?
Everything that I've attended is listed once again on my website, which is losal.net. And I welcome any questions or feedback regarding that. The mayor did attend along with Councilman Edgar, the retirement recognition Saturday night for Major General Keith Jones, who culminated a 43, 43-year career in the military of service to the public and, and honored to be a part of that and, and also present him with recognition on behalf of the city. I realize that November the 4th is coming up, and while we're not having an election related to the city in the same fashion, I would encourage everyone to do their duty, research, make decisions and get out and vote. Voter apathy is one of the things that has been a huge impact. We're not happy, I hear all the time of people that are not happy with actions taken by the state, actions taken by the federal government. And unless you participate, this is what our, our soldiers are fighting for is the freedom to be able to be free and to participate in that. And if you're not participating, you're missing an opportunity to, to make change, to do things the way you would like to see them. So I would encourage, it's too late now to register. Today was the last day to register to vote in the November election. But if you've already registered or you've received your absentee ballot, please fill it out and turn it in. A number of the cities that have already had elections this year have had very poor turnout in comparison. And the 2012 election for Los Alamos was not that good either. So I would encourage people to make sure they go to the polls and let their voice be heard. I'll pass it on.
Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had it, tagging along with Councilmember Gross. I had a chance to attend the candidates forum that was sponsored by the Rossmore Home Association. So that is, I think, available for replay on LA TV. I encourage the public to watch that. You'll get to see, at least for our local election here, it'd be the school board. So the four candidates were there. I hope that Councilmember Edgar will talk about the medical center grand opening. So I'll just say I attended it and I'll let him talk about the rest of that. And I do appreciate what council, or what Mayor Graham Hia talked about the working group, about the zoning amendment, which is that school yard back by the post office. And then we did have a chance to talk ever so briefly on the joint use agreement, which is still kind of moving forward. I attended the Taste for Los Al instead of going to the general's retirement. So thank you to my colleagues for attending that. But Taste for Los Al was another great event there and just fun to get out in the community and see, see folks and hear their input. And I got in earful from Tom there about the fireworks. So with that, I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
All right. Richard?
Not to steal Troy's thunder, but to congratulate him on the hospital. And Stephen, I wish you would take back our congratulations to the whole staff who was there at the opening. And it's been a long battle. It's a beautiful building and the parking lot is much needed and looks wonderful. I was, like Warren, I attended the Taste of Los Al. I think they, they might've had their record attendance. It was huge crowd that, that night. And as several of the speakers have said today, you know, we get a chance to vote in a few weeks. And when I, when I look at a country like Poland where people don't get to vote for 50 years and they stand in line for two days to vote, and we can vote by mail and we get 20% of the people who vote, we need to do better. So please get out there and vote. Even if you don't agree with how I vote, please go out and vote. Thank you.
Troy?
Yeah. A couple of meetings I wanted to talk about. First of all, I had the opportunity with meeting with Justin McKeldery. He is a pastor for the new church that's been planted here in Los Alamos called The Branch. It's a break off of Cypress Church. And he's just trying to meet to try and get an idea of the community. And I told him I would mention his point here. I, I go to Cottonwood, but I still think it's good to support a church of every denomination. And he's, he's really trying to grow this in Los Al. They meet every Sunday at the Los Al Community Center. They started with about 40 people. They're up to 70 in the last couple of months. They are grateful to worship and serve Los Alamos. And his purpose is to try to be a service organization to a lot of the charities. So he's, I told him, you probably need to build a bigger base before you start trying to provide a lot of service because there's a lot of organizations that need help, but not a lot of people will, wanted to join a church thing, get more actions to do. A lot of times they just really need that. So I just want to congratulate him and his, his group, and I appreciate the opportunity to meet with them and talk through that. I, I also would like to, in that vein, I'd also like to agendize an item for the next city council meeting to talk about the process that we use to select the chaplain for our police department. I've had a discussion with the chief and with city manager, and we're going through a process now on the selection of the chaplain. It's not a role that we maintain. It's not a paid role. But I think it's important to the community that we get an evaluation of, or at least communicating what that process is and have a discussion up here. You know, with so many great churches of all denominations in the community, I also want to make sure that we're sending the right message. What was the process that we go through to select a pastor or a leader of a church to service us in a very important role? Because when it comes time for the chaplain role, it's usually the worst. At least that's the time when you really recognize who that is. And I just want to make sure that we all have an understanding. So, city manager.
I support that for being on the next agenda.
Great. Thank you. Did I have an opportunity to, to attend the grand opening? Warren, thank you for allowing me. And Rich, you know, I'd just say a message to Tenet Healthcare and to the PMB or the, the medical group that basically built the suites. So we have a $25 million parking structure and about a $10 million new building, a medical office building. The big message that I think our council, and it was, it was awesome. We all got up there and started talking about how great that was. But we need to continue to talk to Tenet. They're, they're, they're going through a tremendous amount of growth right now and they need to stay focused to finish the $250 million hospital expansion. And we, Stephen, his whole crew, unbelievable service that he's provided them. I mean, it, in real time, great relationship. Stephen, thank you. And Brad, thank you. And Dave, everybody. What a great job. But we're only half in. And we, we, they had a very important meeting this last week in, in Texas. Their CEO was out here and they, they're really trying to prioritize now. They've got hospitals that can cost half as much in Texas and different states where they don't have some of these significant California requirements. So they're trying to reapportion. What are they, are they going to do their 25-year plan or not? So I, I had an opportunity to meet with Kent, who is their CEO. And, you know, again, I would just say, great guy. And anytime we can organize opportunities to talk to them and see how we can help, I hope we do. I also had an opportunity through Dr. Marcy Swelling for the next day. We had a congressman, Peter Sessions, and he's a, he's a congressman from the state of Texas, actually from Dallas, and where Ebola is at, at ground zero. So it was very interesting is that she hosted a forum in her office with him and all the doctors. And Kent was in there from the CEO of the hospital. And they talked about Ebola preparation and how it's going in Dallas, not so good. But what is the reaction? And something that was really, made me feel good was that Kent said that, and Scott Rifkin, the COO, was also in there, that every day they have a meeting to talk about what's going on, how prepared are they right now? So I just want to say a message to the community is, you know, our local hospital is gearing up. They're prepared. They're trying to take the steps and learn the lessons. And there is a real-time communication, not only at, from the hospital and the health organization within the federal government. The congressman and all the people are talking, the hospital liaisons are talking. So there is a significant amount of presence in our community to make sure that we don't have any sort of situation like that. And I thought that was really good. General Jones retirement, Mayor and Councilmember Gross, you guys did an awesome job. It was, you know, Dean being the guy that's been since 2003, the chairman of the regional military affairs group, and then Jerry got up and just did a great, like, thank you to, I just, I, as a veteran, the one thing that it hit me that was really kind of like a tearjerker moment was during that ceremony, his head and COO group, or the non-commissioned officers, so the enlisted and the officers that are degreed, that the enlisted guys who had served with him in Kosovo basically presented their swords, which in the Navy, that doesn't really happen a whole lot. It's almost like two classes of people that don't come together by design a little bit. But it, and as to see that, I was just shocked. And these are people that went to war together and celebrated that. And I thought you guys did just an awesome job. So thank you. A message to the planning commission, have conviction right now. You're under siege as you're going through the general plan. You're seeing stuff that's coming through. A lot of, you know, a lot of the design of the general plan is that the planning commission has to do a lot of the heavy lifting and take the burden of the first response of the community. You know, the mayor said, hey, look, you know, there's things she's hearing and she's looking down at what's happening there. And, you know, we're worried and we're going to see it. But you know what? Stephen, I, I know you have the direct relationship there. And I would just say, you know, let's, let's listen and not just fold some of those things. I'm not making any statements yet until they come to the city council, but I, I think the planning commission is doing an outstanding job and holding the line. And they're not alone and we are paying attention. And, you know, to the areas that they feel very strongly, it's easier for us at the council when those general plan recommendations make their way to us, if they stay convicted and they give us a strong recommendation. Obviously, we need to take community input, but I, I'm, I'm really impressed by the level of toughness that they're showing. Because it's hard. I mean, they, they're, I came by the planning commission the other night and, I mean, it was like a, like the good old days when Jerry and I used to have some fun up here. There was a lot of people out there. And I'm thinking, wow, what the heck is going on in there? So I had to call Brett the next day. And so, I don't know. I just think it's a great process. Thank you. And tell them we look forward to seeing the finished product. That's all I have. Thank you.
And I just, gonna take one more thing. I wanted to update everyone on the I-405 movement that the corridor cities are taking. There's meetings, two different meetings this week with elected official staff to make them aware that we're working on presenting legislation that says that no tolls on the I-405 unless it goes to a vote and a passage by two-thirds vote to the people, no toll lanes. And so the council's been extremely supportive of that. And I'm so appreciative because it's, there's about five of us who are usually at these meetings and, and lobbying on behalf of all the people in Orange County that would have to pay those tolls. They're very significant. I think they're talking about something about $15 round trip if they put them in. We were wishing that OCTA had given us a little bit more support because truly, the Measure M2 money goes to OCTA and then they have to say that they agree with what the plan is for Caltrans. So I would say to you, apply pressure to anybody you know on the OCTA that's not going that path because we don't have to give them the money. And without that money, they can't build the toll lane. So that's just a little bit of an update and I'll keep you updated up until December. All right?
How are our representatives voting? Because I think that's another good thing.
Well.
So we've got Matt Harper Huntington.
Right. Matt's, Matt's been a real advocate. Alan Montour is not, but he's come out and been very supportive. We've got Gary Miller, who's doing a great job up there. He's fighting the good fight. He's getting beat up quite a bit. It's hard to be in the minority. I know how that feels. And let's see, who else?
What was that?
I said, I know how that feels. Diana, well, no, the, the people that I'm working with, Diana's not on the OCTA board, but Diana, Kerry is from Westminster and she's extremely informed. She's been on some other committees that kind of cross over. So she's got an inordinate amount of historical knowledge and a great understanding of what's going on. She's actually been very good to me about bringing me in kind of under her wing and teaching me as I go. And I've tried to be an advocate. I've gotten up and spoken on a couple of different occasions, but it will be one of the things that I truly miss leaving the council. So whoever takes that spot over, please, please stay engaged. Make sure that you're there and just keep fighting for us. It's down the line. It's going to take about a year or two for this to come to fruition. But trust me, every time we turn around, something else is being done to kind of thwart what we're fighting for. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, and I've been hearing from folks that you've been really vocal. So thank you. It takes a lot because it's a big audience when you start talking to that many people.
Well, being vocal is not one thing I have a problem with. So anyways, city manager initiative business.
Just, let's see, a few things. Trunk or Treat event this Saturday, the 25th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And Corey, I don't know, you want to report briefly on recreation software going live today?
Well, first of all, Trunk or Treat is at Little Cottonwood Park this Saturday. It is free to everybody. But yes, our new online registration system through a company called CSI Software is up and live as of today. Like any software, there are little glitches every, now and again, but we're working through them closely with the com- them closely with the company, and our staff are working extremely hard. We took our first registrations actually on Friday, so we definitely encourage the community to, if nothing else, go and create your account online. It's all web-based. If you want to come into the community center, we will step you through the entire process. We have stations, computer stations set up to take you through the process, to create your profile, profiles that are sub-profils for your children and those in your household, and then you can go on and register for second session of fall classes and winter classes that begin in January.
Great.
And then.
Race on the base, I mean, is that a separate?
Correct. Race on the base is through a separate organization.
Go ahead, Brett.
The Western, the mayor had mentioned, you had mentioned, the Western Orange County Elected Officials Group today, several items besides Fourth of July that we mentioned was discussed. Also, flies are a problem, and it's an increasing problem for, many complaints have been received at the base recently, so it seems to be a problem with Los Alamos residents and Seal Beach residents, and the base is trying to get to the bottom of that. So we, as we receive complaints, we are forwarding them on to Nathan Range over there, so that he will follow up, and he has been very responsive for us. And coyotes was talked about, the city of Seal Beach gave an update on their coyote plan and coyote mitigation plan, and comparable to what Cassie has worked on here on behalf of the residents for the city of Los Alamos. There's going to be a, Seal Beach is working with Humane Society on coyote issues, December 2nd and 3rd with the Humane Society, so we'll get more information, we'll post that on our website and get that information to the public. And I did also attend the Taste of Los Al this last Saturday.
Without getting to taste much?
Without. It was positive. And the, I did go to the Medical Center grand opening. Thank you, Councilmember Edgar, for the nice words that you said about the city and about the hospital project, and Stephen Mendoza and his great work and his whole team on the efforts that he's made over the last three years working with the hospital staff, and it was a very successful event. And I went to the planning commission meeting last weekend. I echo Councilmember Edgar's comments on the work that they're doing, and with, under Stephen's leadership as well, they're, they are doing the heavy lifting and bringing things forward that will make it easier, I think, for the city council to eventually adopt the general plan. And I think that was it.
You know what we didn't do? We didn't congratulate the new commissioners, which we should probably do. We have Stephen Hammond, who is now going to be on our LTV commission, and then we also have Josh Wilson, that's what I thought, and he's going to be one of our Parks and Rec. So he's a new guy to the community, but he's been very involved through Southland Credit, so we're very lucky to have both of those people who are interested. Dean, you had one more thing?
Yeah, I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this Sunday, at the Joint Forces Training Base, is the 13th Annual Wings, Wheels, and Rotors Expo.
Oh, yeah.
Free show to the public. It'll be a little bit different show, because we don't have as many military assets this year coming in as we've had in the past, but there'll still be plenty to see and do. Bring the family out, because it is a family-oriented type show, and have fun. It's from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m.
All right, so city attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The council did meet in closed session at the end of the special meeting on two items. One was conference with labor negotiator, no votes were taken, it was informative only. The other was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, and on that one, council instructed staff as to how to proceed. And then I'm also asking the council to make a finding of need for immediate action with regard to a matter that came up today when Ms. Palmer and the police department received a letter from AT&amp;T threatening to turn off phone service for the CAD RMS, CAD RMS system for the city, as well as for Westcom and for the other cities that are involved, based upon a dispute that's been going on for well over a year. I would like to, first of all, ask the council to make that finding of the need, that the need arose and that it's appropriate to have a closed session. We need a two-thirds majority to do that.
Is this a call for emergency item then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what's the council?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, secondly, the purpose of the closed session will be to confer with legal counsel pursuant to section 54956.9, sub-D4, one case.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and do we have any other comments from staff before we end? Nope, all right, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting.